Good evening. Regular meeting number 60 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Harden, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
Is Dr. John Little here? Can you see Dr. Little? There is Dr. Little. Welcome back to council, Dr. Little, to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Eternate God our Father, we thank you for this glorious and wonderful day you have given unto us. We thank you, Father, that we are able to come and to gather ourselves together in this meeting of the minds and meeting of the leaders of our city. And we pray for our council. We pray for their decisions that they will be making. We pray that you would crown their heads with wisdom and with knowledge. We pray that you would touch their hearts, that they may rule with compassion. We thank you for this great city of Columbus. We thank you for all the civil servants who work and who helped make this community a community that we can be proud of. And we just pray for our community as a whole, that you will continue to bring us together in love and unity, and that where there is division, Lord, you will remove that division, and that you will continue to make Columbus a city whereby we are able to raise a family and that we will be a city that we are proud to say that we belong to. And so we ask that your blessing upon this meeting, Lord, we ask that you would continue to guide our leaders, use them in an unusual way, that they will rule to help bless those that are the least of these, and that when we all rise, Lord, we will always be able to give you the glory. We thank you for this day, and we thank you for this opportunity to gather. It is in your name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Little. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda. They'll be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Beginning this evening with resolutions, I have, my council members will indulge me, two resolutions I'd like to bring from the floor, both of which involve our friends at the Ohio State University. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Michael Drake to come forward. And I'd like to begin the first resolution from the floor, and that is 311X-2016, to honor and recognize the life of former Senator John Glenn, a lifelong public servant in Ohio's hometown hero, with a moment of silence in recognition of Dr. Glenn, or, I'm sorry, of Mr. Glenn's life. Thank you. Many things have been said about John Glenn over the past week, rightfully so, with his dedication to public service. He is a veteran, flying two missions, flying several missions for two wars, and explorer, the first American to orbit the Earth, and later returned in life to go back into space, a statesman serving many terms in the U.S. Senate, and a civic leader in the partnership that he formed with the Ohio State University and the Glenn College of Public Policy. And it was my honor, when I was a student at the Ohio State University, to be a John Glenn Fellow in Washington, D.C., which I attribute to the foundation of my life in public service and the inspiration that Senator Glenn has provided to me. So with that being said, and before I turn the floor over to Dr. Drake, can I get a motion to adopt this resolution? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Resolution adopted. Dr. Drake, thank you for coming down to council. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate this recognition that is along with the recognition that Senator Glenn is getting from around the world. And I will make just a few comments and say that all of us grew up admiring him and the great things that he did. One of the great privileges and pleasures of our life here now in Columbus these last three years was the chance to get to meet him and to see, learn more about who he was and how he did things in addition to what he did. And he was as fine a person as any of us have met, and I will miss him greatly, but do our best to honor his legacy.
My colleagues like to say anything about Senator Glenn? Councilmember Mitch Brown.
President Drake, I also, a member of this council and this body, had the opportunity to work with Senator Glenn many, many years ago, and let me echo your words, no finer gentleman have I ever met in my entire life than Senator John Glenn. He treated me with the utmost kindness, and I will forever remember him for being indebted for the way in which he had himself. So thank you for being here this evening.
I will present this resolution to you once we get past the second resolution.
Let me say one more word.
Of course.
I mentioned, you know, I just think I mentioned Senator Glenn and what an incredible person he was. But you really can't mention him without mentioning Annie.
Of course.
So he really had an incredible life partner, and that's one of those people who you can remember from the moment you met her. She's just a really wonderful person, and they together gave so much to us, and we continue to honor and support her.
And she certainly remains in our thoughts and prayers too, as well as the entire Glenn family.
Yes.
And our next resolution is on the agenda, and please, Chief Stone and I think Chief Jacobs, please come forward. It's to recognize the partnership between the Ohio State University Police and Columbus Police Departments during a tragic time in our community. That's 0308X-2016. Can I get a motion to adopt that resolution? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Motion, or this resolution is adopted. I wanted, in the aftermath of the events that happened a few weeks ago at the university, wanted to invite Chief Stone, Dr. Drake, and of course, the great work that CPD does, down to council, just to acknowledge our gratefulness for the partnership that we have. I think it's taken for granted every football Saturday, the multi-jurisdictional effort that takes place amongst public safety forces as we get hundreds of thousands of people in and out of the campus area, but it's truly realized when a horrible event of violence happens on the university and the quick response from the university, the partnership and support that the city has provided, and the heroic efforts, I think, need to be recognized more often. So we wanted, as city councilors, grateful for the partnership that we have that transcends public safety, but in this instance, we're recognizing the safety work that's being done. And just am grateful, Chief, for the work that you have done, and Dr. Drake, and the efforts that are set forward in the partnership, Chief Jacobs and Deputy Chief, that we have to make our community safe, because the university is such a tremendous partner and player in our community, and we are in lockstep to make sure that the university's success is our success. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Former Director Mitch Brown of Public Safety?
No, I think what's really special, President Drake, and certainly the city of Columbus, is that the cooperativeness that takes place. It is a team approach, and nobody takes credit for doing these things by themselves. And certainly, it was emblematic of the way in which they handled that particular unfortunate event that simply exemplifies the way in which we deal with things in the city of Columbus collectively, Columbus PD and Ohio State PD, obviously, and others. There was the Franklin County Sheriff's Office and a variety of other law enforcement agencies that participated. Again, the cooperation is always very, very special, and again, it's part of what makes Columbus special. So thank you very, very much.
Dr. Drake, do you have any other comments?
Just, I mean, really to echo the comments of Councilmember Brown, that the partnership is very important to us. It's important to us every day of the year, 24 hours a day, and we see it in many, many ways. Last, the events of two weeks ago were more visible to many people, but we know that the working relationship is forged from years and years of working together with mutual aid, but also mutual respect. And so our partners work together very well in, on our Saturdays when we have lots of agencies coming, but small things on and off campus throughout the year, we have great cooperation. And really, the title of public safety officer is really the broad context in which this happens, and we do everything we can to make our campus and the surrounding community as safe as possible, and we appreciate our partnership very, very much.
Chief, maybe a word?
I'll just add that the collaboration is something that is an ongoing thing, but it's also very evident that people just go do what needs to be done. I did not see one ego present at that scene. It was all about public safety, as President Drake said. It was all about doing what was required of the individuals there in their individual roles as well. Everybody knew what to do, they took care of business, and they did it without complaint, and they did it in a very much of a collaborative team effort. And I truly appreciate the fact that we're just representing all of those personnel that were there at the scene. They do a lot of hard work, and we truly appreciate having the opportunity to lead them.
President Klein, councilmembers, I want to thank you for this resolution. Also, I'm very appreciative of our relationship and support received from the city of Columbus, Department of Public Safety. In addition to the Columbus Division of Police under Chief Jacobs' leadership, we also have a great leadership with the Columbus Fire, and also the communications personnel assisted us as well on that event, and on an ongoing basis, assisting us in keeping the campus community safe on and off campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, Gina. I do have one more resolution from the floor, but I will go ahead and start to see if my colleagues, and I'll circle back around and do it. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Yes, I do have a resolution. Could Kamisha Knox please approach the podium? Resolution 0310X-2016 is to recognize the leadership and community work of Kamisha Knox as a recipient of the Ohio State University's President's Prize. Kamisha is a senior at Ohio State, and this is the first annual President's Prize. She is receiving one of two that are given out, and it is for her project, Steps to Success. This was conceived of by her, and she had to really flesh out what this project would do in order to receive this very competitive prize. Steps to Success will provide underserved students at our very own East High School with in-person mentorship, laptops, and wireless internet access. The goal is for students to enroll in and graduate from post-secondary programs. And in order to do this, Kamisha will receive a $50,000 living stipend and up to $50,000 in funding to implement Steps to Success. This is really like our very own city Peace Corps initiative, you know, really going in and working with our own residents to implement a project that you know, that you think will be advantageous to them. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move for adoption of the resolution and then turn it over to you to tell us more detail. Any, I'll move for adoption first.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Great. Please take it away.
Thank you all so much for having me here today. I definitely want to thank Dr. Drake and the Ohio State University for awarding me with this award. I'm extremely honored. I'm from Columbus myself, so it is an honor to be able to give back in my own community and to help the students at East High School. I've actually been working with them for actually the past four years, my entire college career, and just helping them, you know, reach their dreams and go to college just like me. So I'm very excited to get started, and I very, I definitely appreciate you all's help in that and support. So thank you so much.
Thank you, President Klein. Would Randy Gasser and Jason Funk please approach the podium? Columbus takes great pride in its veterans and reservists employed by the city. The selfless and dedication of these men and women to serve their country in addition to the residents of Columbus is something to be commended. In order to show our appreciation for their sacrifices, the city of Columbus emphasizes the need to support these individuals and their families during times of deployment and beyond. Tonight, I would like to welcome Randy Gasser, Assistant Ombudsman, Director for the Ohio Department of Defense, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Office, to share a special recognition for one of our Columbus employees. Mr. Gasser, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm with the Department of Defense. We're all volunteers that do this. Jason was nominated by one of his employees, Roger Connor, who couldn't be here tonight, for being a supportive employer. Roger's in the Guard and Reserve, and he has to drill on drill weekends, he has two week ATs and numerous other deployments. Not all employers, unfortunately, are really good treating the Guard and Reserve good. Jason, on the other hand, is exceptional at that, as well as the city of Columbus, because they won the Freedom Award already. This just shows their city of Columbus continuing fight to keep Guard and Reserve employed and treating them good. We really respect that. But this award we have, says Jason Funk, City of Columbus Division of Water, even though it goes to the city, it's for you, because it takes a lot. When these guys put it in, it cuts from the bottom of their heart. So we want to thank you for that.
I just want to say thank you to the council and the city of Columbus for supporting frontline supervision. It makes our job easier, so just thank you, and thank you to the troops, for those who have served and sacrificed. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any comments from my colleagues?
Take Harden, he's to my right.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. This doesn't surprise me one bit about Jason being honored for this. He gets it from an amazing woman, somebody that a lot of us know, his mother, Mary Funk, who gave back to our community for so long, and so just thank you for your continued service and all that you do, Jason.
Thank you, Sheena.
Councilwoman Stenziano?
I actually was gonna repeat that as well. The Funk name means a lot to the city. You hold that family's service, and we thank you not only for on behalf of the city, but what you do for the department as well. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Any other colleagues?
Again, we can't understate, and Jason knows this, because we've known each other for a long, long time. Again, Mary would be very proud, but it just goes without saying. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, President Klein. Just one announcement, I'll be holding a public hearing with Councilmember Jaisa Page regarding new plan for short north parking. As Chair of the Public Service and Transportation Committee, we've heard at length the difficulty that residents, business owners, employees have parking in the short north. Traffic engineers from the Department of Public Service have worked very hard to come up with this new parking plan, but we want to discuss and hear from residents and folks that use the short north about this new plan. So it will be January 10th at 5:30 PM at Goodell Shelter House. I encourage all concerned and interested parties to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. I do have one kind of announcement, and we have a guest this evening. If Mr. John Rush could come down to the podium, he wants to speak to us briefly about She Has a Name, and I believe all of my colleagues and many of you here are familiar with this organization and the work that they do for victims of human trafficking, and definitely would, just like to thank President Klein for his leadership in this area as well, passing the Hotel Motel legislation not too long ago, to really address those nuisance places that unfortunately will give way for these victims to be kind of kept under the shadows in those places. So thank you for that, and really just would like to give Mr. Rush and, I'm sorry, Kelsey Johnson, the ability to talk about She Has a Name and the work that you've done over the past year. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Page, and thank you, Councilmember, President Klein, and thank you all, council, and City Attorney Pfeiffer, the very first person I reached out to when I was still in Chicago, who emailed me within an hour a response. And so from day one, city council, the city of Columbus, has been a tremendous partner in working with us at Clean Turn Enterprises as we look to provide employment for individuals that are coming from very challenging backgrounds, with great community partnering organizations. I mean, just walking in the door to see John from Community Development for All People, to see the Columbus Urban League, Stephanie Hightower, so many friends, and it takes a community. Priscilla Tyson, I remember us meeting when I was on the board at Freedom Alakart, dealing with this issue of anti-human trafficking, and we just wanted to come and express our thanks to the current city council, to the city of Columbus, to the prior city council, to Mayor Genthur, to Mayor Coleman. You know, it takes the public sector to be active and engaged in this space, but it also takes the private sector, and we as one member in the private sector are doing everything, well, I wouldn't say everything, we're pushing hard to do everything that we can to encourage the remaining part of the public sector to be active and engaged, because we can only be one smart of the, one part of the puzzle. And also the state house, the state has a role to play, and so we look forward to continuing to work with each of you in the days ahead, and we just wanted to express our sincere thanks and wish you a happy holiday, and we look forward to a great 2017. Kelsey is our managing director at She Has a Name Cleaning, and she can highlight just briefly a little bit more about what we do there.
Yeah, just quickly, since we launched in 2015, we've been able to offer over 50 employment opportunities, so we're excited to engage the community more, not just on a policy level, but on a practical level of just hiring us for a cleaning, because that provides employment in a positive way. So we're here to create those opportunities and kind of engage it through employment. So thank you. Appreciate it.
One last thing, just two hours ago, Kelsey and I were at a funeral over on the west side, and Stephanie's mother, her dad found her on the toilet a week ago from an overdose. I mean, just to put this into real life, every week, I know we hear about it, and to see it, and then to see the family today, just puts an extra exclamation point behind the urgency of what we're dealing with here. And so thank you, Jaisa Page, for giving us the opportunity to share, and again, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for all of your work that you do every single day in making our city a better place to live, work, and play, especially for the least of these. Thank you.
Thank you, John and Kelsey, for coming down, and that's all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein, tonight. I have an announcement and a resolution. First, I would like to invite everyone, either in chambers now or watching at home, to participate in the committees that I chair, this hearing on the 2017 proposed budget hearing this week. Department of Public Utilities hearing will be tomorrow, Tuesday, December 13th at 5:30 PM. Judiciary and Court Administration will follow that hearing at 7:00 PM, and the Department of Technology will hold their hearing on Thursday, December 15th at 6:00 PM. All are welcome, and hopefully, folks will have an opportunity to come and attend and participate in our budget process. Next, I would like to invite John Ramos, President of the League of United Latin American Citizens Columbus, to come forward to the podium, along with Emily Bibic, Council Vice President, and Francisco Cruz, Council Treasurer, and Ina Semakowski, Council Legal Advisor. As I introduce Resolution 0298X-2016, to recognize and celebrate the 10th anniversary of the League of United Latin American Citizens and their contribution to the city of Columbus. The League of United Latin American Citizens is recognized as both the largest and oldest organization for Hispanic citizens within the United States of America. It's an organization sincerely dedicated to the furthering access to education, promoting civil rights, and advocating for employment for all Hispanic people by providing job counseling services to over 18,000 Hispanic students per year, and grants access to literacy training so that Latinos will experience prosperity within the workforce. LULAC seeks to empower Hispanic people by helping them gain citizenship, organizing voter registration drives, developing low-income housing units, and aiding youth through leadership training programs. For the past decade, LULAC has been dedicated to uplifting and providing aid to the Hispanic people within the city of Columbus, and will no doubt continue to do so into the future. Congratulations on this great milestone and anniversary. Before I move for adoption, I'd like to offer the floor to any of my colleagues for comment. Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. John, the podium and floor is all yours?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Council President Klein, Councilwoman Tyson, Brown and Page, and Councilmen Brown, Harden, and Stenziano, for this opportunity. And I'd like to also say thank you to the city council staff members for reaching out to us. We've been, we established ourselves, LULAC here in Columbus back in 2006, and it's been an ongoing ordeal. At least we could count with the city council and with the, our relationships with other agencies here, which has helped us to promote equality amongst the Latino community. Now, LULAC Columbus will remain committed to supporting our community with over 12 chapters that we have with, throughout Ohio, with LULAC Ohio across the state, and we would like, we would look forward to continuing LULAC's 88-year legacy, that's at the national level, of working together to improve in the quality of life across education, health, women's issues, and civil rights. As always, LULAC stands ready to work with our nation's elected leaders to advance the issue and policy positions of the Latino community. And as our LULAC National President, Proyez Rocha, mentioned, however, we will not hesitate to defend the Latino community from unjust and unfair laws and policies that negatively impact the quality of life of the Hispanic Americans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Klein. I have two resolutions. The first is 0307X-2016. I'm going to ask Sean Hubert from Columbus Public Health and Adrian Neal from Equitas Health to please walk towards the podium, please. This resolution is to recognize, acknowledge World AIDS Day and to encourage Columbus Public Health and its surrounding community partners to continue their efforts to serve and alleviate issues related to HIV/AIDS and other STDs. Whereas World AIDS Day was launched in 1988 by the World Health Organization as one of the eight global public health campaigns to raise international awareness regarding a disease that has claimed more than 35 million lives, whereas more than 2,200 residents have died from HIV or AIDS complications in Ohio since the epidemic began, whereas more than 21,000 Ohio residents live with HIV and over 4,600 reside in Franklin County. And whereas HIV and AIDS continue to plague communities around Ohio, 215 new cases were reported in 2015, whereas a racial disparity exists as African-Americans have an HIV/AIDS rate which is 3.7 times higher than whites. Whereas the city of Columbus expresses its appreciation for the strong partnerships which exist between the AIDS Healthcare Foundation, Equitas Health, the Ohio AIDS Coalition, the Nationwide Children's Hospital Faces Program, and Columbus Public Health, who each came together on World AIDS Day and continue to crusade to reduce this disease. Whereas the city of Columbus embracing its obligation to mitigate the issue for the public health and welfare of its citizens, and now therefore, be it resolved that this council of the city of Columbus does recognize World AIDS Day and adopts this resolution to raise awareness in the city of Columbus and further encourages Columbus Public Health and its surrounding community partners to continue their efforts to serve and alleviate issues related to HIV/AIDS and other STDs. First, I move to amend, as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, and I now move for adoption. Thank you. And I now move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Shall the floor, Joyce?
Great. Thank you. Councilperson Protem Tyson and the rest of City Council, thank you for this great opportunity to speak and think about this important topic of HIV. To get to what our goal is, is no new infections. You mentioned our great partners. The city must work with our great partners here in Columbus to make sure that this happens. We can do this by ensuring those that are HIV-positive get into care and stay in care. And by doing that, they get on medications to become virally suppressed, so that they cannot pass the virus to someone else. Those that are HIV-negative but higher risk for HIV must get on to prep a single-dose pill that's taken daily, an amazing opportunity for those not to get HIV and to prevent it completely. And then, of course, the continued use of condoms for those that are sexually active. We have our tools in place to prevent HIV today. So, working together with our partners, the city has this great opportunity in front of us. And thank you for this opportunity to speak about it tonight.
Any comments, my colleagues? Seeing that, and I know Sean, and I know we, we are constantly talking about, I read the number here, that certainly African-Americans are contracting HIV and AIDS 3.7 times more than Caucasians. And so, we continue to have to work to get the message out, so that things you just mentioned, that the minority community can get, can begin to use those tools, and so we can stop the epidemic in our community. But thank you for your work.
Thank you.
My second resolution is 0309-X-2016, and I'm going to ask Margaret Griffin to walk towards the podium. And this resolution is to recognize and applaud Ms. Margaret Griffin for being selected as the President's Prize Scholar by the Ohio State University, and to thank her for her commitment to social change for her work with the Unity Fridge Program. So, she's the other person that got the award, of the two awards, she's the other person. And whereas, Ohio State University has selected two graduating seniors as a President Prize Scholars, these students are being recognized for the boldness of their ideas, their capacity to champion change, and their commitment to the global community. Whereas, 29 million Americans live in a food desert, areas with little access to fresh produce that is needed for proper nutrition and development. The data shows that in Ohio, an estimated 16% to 20% of the state lives in a food desert. Whereas, Ms. Margaret Griffin was awarded one of the first annual President Prize Awards in recognition for her Unity Fridge Program, which is a food-sharing system that will place refrigerators in neighborhoods around Columbus, near schools, and will connect with community gardens and restaurants to fill refrigerators with locally grown fresh produce. Whereas, it is believed that placing refrigerators in or near schools will allow children leaving school for the day with immediate access to nutritious produce to bring home. Whereas, a Unity Fridge Program will create an on-campus garden managed by students and faculty from Ohio State, and a student organization which will help with the planting, garden maintenance, and delivering food. And whereas, a Unity Fridge Program will change lives and strengthen, and strengthen students' commitment to bettering the lives of others. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of, the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council is hereby recognize and applaud the work of Margaret Griffin, and congratulate her for being named a President's Prize Scholar by the Ohio State University, and thank her for her commitment to social change, for her work with the Unity Fridge Program. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And so, as you know, we passed a food plan in November for Franklin County and the City of Columbus. And one of the goals of that food plan is to improve access to and education about healthy food, affordable food, and local food. And her initiative certainly is included in Goal B of our food plan. And so, I want to say thank you for coming up with this innovative idea to make sure our children have access to healthy local food. And now, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. Thank you, Council President Klein, and thank you, council members. It's such an opportunity to get to be here tonight and to receive this award. I'm so thankful. I also want to take a second to thank President Drake and the Ohio State University. This would not be possible without their continuous support. I'm excited to continue working on my project and to begin to combat food deserts in our Columbus community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. My final resolution is 312X-2016. It's a resolution in opposition to Ohio Senate Bill 331, Amendment to Municipal Minimum Wage Benefits Packages and the Erosion of Local Control. And this particular ordinance is in direct opposition to really what is a Christmas tree omnibus bill at the State House that continues to strip away rights of local governments across the state of Ohio to operate and control what's best for workers, neighborhoods, and communities in their local jurisdictions. And it's our plea as one of the most, if not the most prospering economies in Ohio and in the Midwest, is to ask the General Assembly to let legislatures like city councils deal with what is best and decide what is best for their city, and not be directed out of the state legislature in the state of Ohio. My colleagues have any comments they want to add to that? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Thank you, President Klein, for introducing this piece of legislation. I just want to add, when you, when you read the legislation, the great lengths to which the state went in enumerating all the ways in which we are not able to, are not allowed now to work with our local companies and local workers, it really frustrates me on its face, but more so that it was done in the fashion you outlined, President Klein. So, last minute in the lame duck session, with no outreach to local communities to understand how the impact would really be felt here in our city.
Certainly, an affront to local control. Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption of this resolution. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Resolution adopted. Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration, Auditor Dorian, the Treasurer's Office, City Attorney's Office, any members of the municipal judiciary? Seeing none. We do have a request that 0300X-2016 be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda. So, clerk, if you could remove that from the Consent Action portion of the agenda. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Was there a motion? Is it second? Okay. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Clerk, will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 2969 and 3147-2016. Administration Committee ordinance 3187-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2869, 2871-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2692, 2891, 2943, 2961, 2968, 2974, 2985, 2996, 3010, 3027, 3035, 3036, 3050, 3051, 3053, 3074, 3096, 3133, 3134, 3135, 3141, and 3178-2016.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Clerk Levens, will you now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of expression 302X-2016. Finance Committee ordinance is 2893, 2936, 3015, 3137, 3140, 3197-2016. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 3045, 3064, 3075, 3080, and 3129-2016. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 3108 and 3123-2016. Environment Committee ordinance is 3149, 3150, 3151, 3154, and 3180-2016. Administration Committee ordinance is 2948, 3083, 3094, 3095, 3097, 3099, and 3100-2016. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 2363, 2777, 2856, 3052, 3059, and 3065-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2917, 2942, 2949, 2971, 3111, 3084-2016. Small and Minority Business Development Committee ordinance 3181-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2859, 2867, 2870, 3207-2016. Housing Committee ordinance is 3014, 3032, 3106, 3111, 3122, 3159, 3160, 3161, and 3183-2016. Technology Committee ordinance is 2924, 2926, 2928, 2929, 2952, 2993, 2999, 3000, 3176-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2694, 2713, 2798, 2838, 2888, 2896, 2900, 2907, 2931, 2935, 2944, 2945, 2950, 2953, 2970, 2975, 2987, and 3071-2016. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0125, 185, 187, 188, 192, 193, 194, 195, 196, 197, 198, 199, 200, 201, 202, 203, 204, 205, 206, 207, 208, and 209-2016.
Thank you, clerk.
Mm-hmm.
We do have one speaker. It's Nathaniel Wilkins. He's speaking in favor of 3014-2016. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. If you just could state your name for the record, any organizations that you represent, you'll have three minutes.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of solid vacant property in North London area. I just would like to know how long this property been into the land bank, and what will this property be used for? Thank you for your time.
Director Shoney, if you could work with Mr. Wilkins on answering those questions, we would appreciate it. Any other comments or questions about the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? So, second, clerk, call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of 3150-2016, on which, on which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes. Consent action carries. We will now proceed to the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is, the Finance Committee is chaired by President Protem Tyson. President Protem Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. The first ordinance I have is ordinance 3086-2016. It's to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget to authorize the C. O. to transfer funds within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to modify a contract with Palmetto Construction Services LLC for Phase 1 renovations at 4252 Grove's Road Building, to authorize expenditure of $1,650,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, and declare an emergency. This building is being renovated for several public safety divisions, and also additionally, the Support Services Division, along with the Waits, Measures, and Licensing Division, will be relocated from Piedmont to this complex. The modification is necessary due to unforeseen underground water conditions that were encountered during, during the Phase 1 construction. Due to the large volume of underground water encountered, the engineering firm is in the process of redesigning the site to can, to contain a wet retention pond. And I would ask my colleagues for passage of this legis, or this ordinance.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Could now turn to page four. It's ordinance number 2969-2016, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into three universal term contracts for the option to purchase services to inspect and repair fire and smoke dampers at various city locations with Julian Spare Company, Simplex Grenelle LLP, and the Columbus Heating and Ventilating, to authorize expenditure of $3 to establish the contracts from the general fund, and to waive competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Code. I'm going to ask Deputy Director Dan Gianardella to speak on this legislation as to why we are waiving competitive bidding.
President Klein, Chair Tyson, members of council, I thank you for entertaining this ordinance this evening. This will allow us to, to basically go in and, and fix HVAC systems properly. And we are waiving bidding on this, again, just awarding multiple vendors and allowing us to continue to get this work completed. And just thank you for having this ordinance on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Seeing that, I move for passage.
I'm sorry.
I need to waive second reading.
Motion is to waive second reading.
Correct.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance on the same page is 3147-2016, to authorize the Finance and Management Department to modify and extend the contract with Grant Riverside Methodist Hospitals Work Health for the purchase of drug and alcohol testing services. I request to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And now, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to move to Health and Human Services. I have ordinance number 3098-2016, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Measurement Resources LLC, to provide consultation services to assess and recommend primary care services for Columbus residents, and to authorize an expenditure of $98,485 from the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to declare an emergency. And Dr. Long, could you just please speak on why we need to have a assessment of the primary care services in Columbus?
President Klein, President Protem, and Finance Chair, and Health and Human Services Chair Tyson, and members of council, this has been a project that we have been considering for some time. Clearly, the environment has changed over years with respect to the number of uninsured that we have in Columbus, as well as some of the provider environments have changed. We have had a longstanding commitment, and will continue a longstanding commitment, to provide support for primary care services. So, the question that we have posed is, what are the needs and gaps today with respect to providing primary healthcare services for the uninsured Columbus resident? So, in fact, that's exactly what this contract would do, is it is a review of the current needs and gaps for the uninsured persons here in Columbus and Franklin County. We have fewer uninsured persons today than we had five years ago, for sure. We know that it's a changing environment as well, so we are absolutely committed to monitoring what those changes may be. But indeed, it is very appropriate, I believe, and would request your support to look at what are the current needs, the current kinds of service provisions, hours, et cetera. So, that's really what this proposed contract would do.
Thank you, Dr. Long. I move for passage. But first, no, I move, yeah, I move for passage. But first, no, I move, yeah, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I would now like to read ordinance 3209-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with the Community Shelter Board for the purpose of providing housing assistance for low-income residents and those living at or below the poverty level, to authorize an appropriation expenditure of $48,000 in the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency. This legislation is also being sponsored by Councilmember Jaisa Page, and I will let her bring up the speakers and share information on this ordinance. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Protam Tyson. And as I'm speaking, I would like to ask Robert "Bo" Chilton, CEO of Impact Community Action, as well as Kim Jordan, Senior Vice President of Operations for Central Ohio YMCA, to both approach the podium. And really, the thought behind this proposed legislation is to support for agencies throughout our city that are working to help those who need emergency rental assistance. Over the course of the year, all of us have taken part in conversations regarding the rise in family homelessness across our city, the unfortunate rise in evictions, and trying to really figure out what we can do as a city to reduce those numbers and support the organizations that are working in this space as well. So, I'd like to thank you both for coming down and give you both the opportunity to speak about the work that your organizations are doing and how this money will continue to support those efforts. Ms. Jordan, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Page. Thank you for this opportunity. We look forward to using this money to help the immediate neighborhood and members that we serve at the Eldon and Elsie Ward YMCA. We also are partnering with the YWCA Family Shelter on Fifth Avenue. We are focusing on those families that fall in the gap over income but don't make enough money in order to secure housing on their own. So, we feel we feel very grateful to be able to do this, especially at this time of year, and be able to help some of our most vulnerable people in our neighborhoods. So, thank you.
To President Klein, President Protam Tyson, and members of counsel, thank you for this opportunity to speak on this legislation, and more importantly, thank you for bringing it forward to counsel. They say that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and certainly, we understand that to solve the issues of homelessness, it's a continuum of services and support that will be needed. Shelter is just one answer, but affordability, we do have an affordability crisis. It's one of the unattended consequences of Columbus having a thriving economic economy. Our rents are rising, and it's becoming more and more difficult for those who are working part-time, sometimes two and three jobs, to maintain housing. And so, it is much easier for us to intervene and to prevent someone from going into a homeless shelter than it is for them to lose everything, to lose their belongings and have to rebuild from the ground up. And so, by doing this small intervention, we can help stabilize families, particularly during the holidays when it becomes stressful and more difficult. And certainly, we want to continue to work towards holistic solutions by providing comprehensive case management and knowing that housing is one aspect, but employment and workforce development are the other aspects that we need to work in a holistic fashion. So, thank you for this opportunity. With these dollars, we'll be able to leverage some of our community service block grant dollars and assist over 40 families during the next two to three months. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan and Bo, for coming down. Really appreciate your comments, and I don't have anything further. I would now give it back to President Protam Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Page, and just thank you for your leadership in supporting these organizations, and the comments that Bo just stated, and Bo and Kim are absolutely right, and it really plays into what Councilmember Brown and this and the resolution that President Klein spoke on today, certainly that to take the rights away from the cities to be able to look at an opportunity to be able to increase, help to increase the wages of individuals so that they're not in the situations that you face to be able to provide dollars for is certainly is certainly disconcerting when you think about someone else telling a city what you can and cannot do, and we have the needs that need to be met, as you just spoke on tonight. So, again, thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Councilmember Page, for your leadership in providing dollars to support these organizations to help our community. Thank you. And with that, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, I'd like to move to rules and reference. Thank you. Rules and reference, ordinance number 3156-2016 is to repeal Section 2329.02 of the Columbus City Code and to enact new sections 2329.13 and 2329.14 of the Columbus City Code by adding provisions requiring retailers to obtain a license for selling tobacco products and product paraphernalia and prohibiting the sale of tobacco products and product paraphernalia to individuals under the age of 21. Over the last several months, I have worked with Columbus Public Health and a number of stakeholders to develop a carefully crafted policy that will prohibit the sale of tobacco products and paraphernalia to anyone under 21. The proposed legislation will also require vendors to obtain a tobacco license, which will be administered by Columbus Public Health. The Tobacco to 21 policy is being proposed in order to help reduce health hazards and early addiction to nicotine products. We know that tobacco has devastating health consequences. Young people are particularly vulnerable population. They are susceptible to becoming addicted to smoking and subsequent become lifelong users. Further, the research shows an estimated 5.6 million young people in the United States under the age of 18 who are currently alive and projected to die prematurely from a tobacco-related illness, and that includes 259,000 Ohio youth if there are no changes to the rate of tobacco use. National data indicates that 95% of adult smokers began before the age of 21. This shows that 18 to 21 is a critical period when youth transition from experimentation to regular use. People who start smoking by the age of 18 are almost twice as likely to become lifelong smokers when compared to individuals who start after they turn 21 years of age. Last year, the Institute of Medicine concluded that raising the minimum legal sales age for tobacco products nationwide could improve health outcomes across a person's lifetime and ultimately save lives. In addition, with the Celebrate One Initiative, our city has undertaken a major effort to reduce infant mortality. Smoking during pregnancy has been linked to premature births and sudden infant death syndrome. The data available demonstrates that in Franklin County, 22% of women ages 18 to 21 smoke during pregnancy. This is twice the rate of smoking for those over 21. In central Ohio, Bexley, Upper Arlington, Grandview Heights, and New Albany have already restricted sales to 21 and over. In addition, over 200 cities nationwide have prohibited tobacco sales to 21 and up. There was an opportunity for public comment at a hearing that focused on this topic. The hearing was held on Tuesday, November 22, and testimony was also taken on this issue at a hearing held on Tuesday, November 29. In addition, I have made a diligent effort to make sure interested parties receive responses when contacting my office or other council members about Tobacco 21. For me, this is simply about the health of our residents. Tobacco use is a public concern. Out of interest to public health, the city implemented the Clean Indoor Act 10 years ago to prevent smoking indoors in most public spaces. Now, we have an opportunity to increase the age of tobacco sales, and I believe the time to do this is now. And now, I'm going to call up my there are speakers who want to speak on this topic. I'm going to call them up. The first will be Shelley Kaiser. Please state your name and who you represent.
My name's Shelley Kaiser, and I'm with the American Lung Association. Council President Klein and members of counsel, I'm Director of Abigee for the American Lung Association, and I represent a coalition of groups, including the Lung Association, the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, the American Heart Association, Ohio Health, the Ohio State School of Public Health, Nationwide Children's Hospital, Mount Cornwall Health Systems, and the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. We would like to thank Columbus Public Health, the Health and Human Services Committee, and Council President Protam Priscilla Tyson for their hard work to bring this legislation to fruition. Their efforts showed their commitment to health and safety of the youth of Columbus. We're a diverse group of organizations, but the one thing we have in common is our concern for the toll that tobacco use takes on the people of Columbus and in Ohio. Every year in our state, kids smoke over 27 million packs of cigarettes, and over 7,000 children become new daily smokers. Every year, we lose 20,000 Ohioans to smoking. That's our mothers, our fathers, our aunts, our uncles, our friends. Financially, there's also a toll. Annual healthcare costs to our state directly related to smoking are $5.6 billion. Just Medicaid costs alone are $1.7 billion. The healthcare costs are high because, as we all know, tobacco use causes a range of diseases. And who bears the burden of these diseases? In Ohio, the people who smoke at double the general population's smoking rate include Medicaid recipients, the uninsured, LGBT, people with mental illnesses, people living in poverty, and people who did not graduate high school. In Ohio alone, the tobacco industry spends over $1 million a day marketing its products, so it's no wonder we have this situation. That's why the legislation that you're considering today is so important. Prevention is key. It's better never to start than to try to quit the incredibly powerful addiction that nicotine causes. Fortunately, Tobacco to 21 has been shown to reduce high school smoking rates significantly, preventing kids from starting. 12 years ago, Columbus City Council passed legislation to keep smoke out of public places. That bold move helped us set the stage for the state, two years later, to pass strong smoke-free public places laws. Now, we can barely remember a time when we had to breathe that cloud of carcinogens to spend a night out with our family and friends. We are looking to you again to be leaders in bringing another important public health protection that will positively impact the health of the youth of this city. So, please support the legislation before you, Tobacco 21. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Shelley. Our next speaker is Kiana Locke. Good evening, Kiana. Could you state your name and who you represent?
Sorry. I'm Kiana Locke, and I'm here with Youth to Youth. So, like I said, I'm Kiana Locke. I'm a senior, and I've been involved with Youth to Youth for about, going on two years. Youth to Youth is an organization based out of Columbus that focuses on issues that teens face and gives us a voice to create positive change. Being a part of Youth to Youth has motivated me to speak out and be heard about issues that are important to me. So, around this time last year, I had joined this committee at Youth to Youth because I wanted to make a change in our community, and that committee was about preventing teen tobacco use. So, being a senior in high school, I've seen a lot of stuff, especially being a drug-free teen. It's so easy for teens to get tobacco now than ever, and I'm going to just kind of explain why. So, everybody knows somebody 18. Once you hit middle school, you already have a sibling or a friend who either knows someone or is already 18, and that's a common problem. Tobacco has always been a problem, and the use of cigarettes and the use of cigarettes halves, you know, they have gone down dramatically, but the use of hookah and e-cigarettes have tripled. The tobacco industry has found a new way into the teen community, which needs to be stopped. The committee I was a part of came up with a PSA to let tobacco industries know that we don't need to smoke to be cool or to fit in because tobacco isn't in. Tobacco 21 erases that. We know someone who can get it for us because 10 times out of 10, a middle schooler won't know a 21-year-old. I'm all for Tobacco 21 because this could and will change teens' lives for the better. Restricting access to tobacco at 18 will force teens to find other things to do rather than smoking and maybe even teach them a little bit about themselves that they didn't know or wouldn't even have known about themselves if they were to smoke. Tobacco 21 is a great way to prevent bad decisions and create better decisions. Thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you. What high school do you attend?
I go to Hannah Lincoln High School.
All right. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
And our final speaker would be Dr. Rob Crane. Against, say your name and who you represent.
Good evening. I'm Rob Crane. I'm a professor at Ohio State in Family Medicine. I'm here with my team, and I'll introduce them in just a second. President Klein, President Protam Tyson, members of counsel, thank you so much for letting me speak on this important topic. I'm not a very good speaker, so I've kind of decided to hide behind props and kids. The props are twofold. One, got this book from the Institute of Medicine, which talks about age 21 for tobacco. We also have, from just last week, the Surgeon General's report on e-cigarettes, a tomb, as it were. And then finally, we have coming up here right now, cheesecake. I'll explain that to you in just a second. The book itself talks about 4.2 million years of life saved if we raise the age nationally to 21. It also talks about saving lives through reductions in premature birth, infant mortality, and sudden infant death syndrome. The tomb here talks about e-cigarettes. Just came out last week. You may have heard it on the news, the dangers of e-cigarettes, the fact that e-cigarettes represent tremendous neurotoxicity for adolescents, and especially for young women who are pregnant with their fetuses developing inside them. Finally, the cherry cheesecake. Now, my sons here have a cheesecake for each of you as a bribe. I'm reminded by Kelly Hikes that under $25, you can take a bribe. Now, the heat in this room has made this cheesecake a little bit dangerous to your health. Just put your hands over your ears. We'll be good. The cheesecake is to remind you that the reason that kids smoke e-cigarettes and vape has to do with the flavor. The flavorings are everything. Smell that wonderful smell when you get your, you want to hand it up to Ms. Page right here? She can hand it across. This is my son Connor, who's 12, and my son Chase, who is nine, sixth grade and third grade. The reason kids vape is cherry cheesecake and mango lemonade and red bullish and seduce juice and cinnamon roll and gummy bear and unicorn blood. This industry clearly has our kids directly in their sights, and it's our opportunity now to draw a line in the sand for all nicotine and tobacco products, one they can't cross easily, one that we will enforce with all the auspices of the Health Department. This is an opportunity, I think, that we have been long awaiting, and I wanted to personally thank Protam, Councilmember Tyson, who has been such a steadfast supporter of this legislation and has worked through all the glitches and difficulties. Such Teresa Long, without her help in finding ways to do this the right way, we'd never get it done. Thank you all very much, and I so appreciate your help.
Thank you, Dr. Crane. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
I just wanted to thank you, President Protam Tyson, for, as Dr. Crane said, really being a champion for getting this done here in Columbus. Dr. Crane, I know that you have worked for decades on decreasing tobacco use across our country and across the world, and I want to thank you for that as well. Thank you for these efforts in our home city here. It was great to hear Kiana's testimony about what's really going on for teenagers and how this will help. So, you have my thanks, Protam.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Council President Klein?
Thank you, President Protam Tyson. To echo Councilmember Elizabeth Brown's comments, you have demonstrated remarkable leadership in bringing this legislation and crafting it with all of the respective players at the table, including Dr. Crane, whose expertise is world-renowned on this subject and someone that we look up to when it comes to the scientific reasons and evidence about and the effects of cigarette smoke. and the effects of cigarette smoke. And Dr. Crane, recognizing the work that you're doing across this country, as Councilmember Elizabeth Brown noted, I think it should be mentioned and applauded for the lives that you're trying to save. I know that there are folks on different sides of the ledger and arguing pro and con for raising the age of tobacco to 21, but as you have demonstrated, the CDC has demonstrated, and medical professionals across the country have demonstrated, the evidence is overwhelming that if you want to make a difference in infant mortality, if you want to make a difference in saving teens' lives, that raising the age of 21 is an important step that's necessary to make a difference and save lives and improve health outcomes, especially for those that are most vulnerable, and those are our newborn babies and our infants. So thank you for being the national leader, setting the stage, and hopefully Columbus can be exemplary and for other cities to follow. President Pro Tem Tyson, thank you.
Thank you, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. Thank you. Dr. Long, would you want to make any comments at all on this?
I didn't get any cheesecake. No. President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson, members of council, again, this is an important key, I would say, a key or crucial policy initiative for the city to consider. It is all about protecting health and improving lives, which you know is our core purpose. I could go on, if you'd like me to do so, about what this legislation before you would do, but it does do, just as Council President Pro Tem has said, it will actually prohibit the sale of tobacco, tobacco sales inclusive of products and paraphernalia like hookah, e-cigarettes, and rolling papers to anyone under the age of 21. Again, I would be happy to go on if you would like me to about what else is in the legislation, but that really is the key item, and it is, again, about protecting health, about preventing the addiction that tobacco and nicotine mean for our youth, and of course, saving lives, many lives.
Thank you, Dr. Long, and I personally want to just say thank you because certainly this legislation has a civil enforcement process that's due to Columbus Public Health and a criminal process. And so I appreciate Dr. Long for you thinking outside the box and to make that a reality for us. I appreciate you. I also want to thank everyone who testified at the hearings, those who were in support, those who had concerns about it, and we certainly reached out to them. I want to thank Kelly Arthur Hikes, who I think is in chambers, who has worked very diligently on, from the Columbus Public Health, working with our team for working on this legislation. I'm going to thank Andrew Dyer, who worked along with Kelly from Columbus Legislative Research Office, the two of those worked on this legislation. And again, my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, and again, everyone that came down and the stakeholders, Dr. Crane, and everyone that came to the meetings. And again, should we pass this legislation, it certainly isn't because we've received cheesecake. The point was made really well about the flavoring, so thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Please, appreciate your applause, but we don't applaud during the regular portion of the agenda, but thank, appreciate that. The next committee is Economic Development. It's chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Settle in, folks. I've got a lot on the agenda tonight, but I'm actually going to skip to the Environment Committee quickly because I do have a guest here for our piece relating to the Green Columbus Fund. So could Stephanie Hightower please approach the podium along with her guest? The Green Columbus Fund is really a key piece of our economic development initiative to make sure we're reusing properties in the best way we can, and it can take all sorts of forms, whether that's remediation, or demolition, or, as you'll hear in this special case with the Urban League. Stephanie, I also want to thank you for your leadership in launching the Spark Initiative, and I really appreciate the conversation. I was thrilled to be able to be there for the launch and see the way the conversation's unfolding, so unrelated to this, but thank you for that. I will go ahead and introduce Ordinance 3153-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a brownfield grant agreement with Columbus Urban League to perform asbestos remediation and selective demolition on the site pursuant to the Green Columbus Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $175,165 from the Northland and Other Acquisition Funds, and to declare an emergency. The Columbus Urban League has acquired a property just west of their current location in the King Lincoln District, and they've worked diligently with the Near East Area Commission to preserve the facade of this building and thereby the character for the neighborhood. So I invited Stephanie to come down and tell us a little bit more about what's going on in this very special project for the Urban League.
Thank you very much, President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson, and Chair Elizabeth Brown, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come down tonight to speak to you about this program and this new building we're really excited about. I have with me my partners here. First, I want to say thank you to Kathleen and the Near East Area Commission for helping really to drive us to come forward to put this grant in. And then I have our construction folks from the DD Group who are helping to build this new program, build this new building. And when I say program, because there are a lot of programs that will be now housed in this new facility that we're really, really excited about. It will be opening up in the May of 2018. It will be the Columbus Urban League's 100th year anniversary, and so we just are really excited about the opportunity, not only to celebrate 100 years of service in this community, but to also bring and give back to the community in a significant way. So some of the programs that are going to be in there that will move out of our current headquarters, one will be My Brother's Closet. I don't know if many of you are familiar with it. It's a men's suiting drive. Basically, it is the equivalent to Dress for Success, but it's for men. And in particular, we clothe and suit and boot those men who are 200% below poverty level, as well as our ex-offenders, to get them back to work, make them feel good, look good, so when they go for those jobs, they have the opportunity to be on a level playing field. We will also be looking at putting in an entrepreneurship program for minority businesses. We know that in our city right now, when you start looking at female and minority-owned business, entrepreneurship, that we are lagging as it relates on a national level. So we know, especially because we will be hosting the 2018 National Urban League Conference, we know that we are going to need to have to bring in and ensure that minorities and women are a key component of the economic spend that will go on in the community when you have 14,000 to 15,000 people coming in for that conference in 2018. And then we also have workforce development programming that will go in there. We have two credentialing programs that we're very proud of. One is for technology, as well as one is for supply chain logistics that will move in there. And then lastly, the cool part of it, and it's called KEWL. It's a STEM-related program, four-week program for middle schoolers to come and innovate and to basically incubate their ideas so that they can then move on to be, hopefully, that next generation of STEM leaders in our country. So that's the programming that's going to be in there. Really excited about what we're going to be able to offer again to our community, and really appreciate the opportunity for council to review this grant, and the Development Department to review this grant, and to approve, give us the ability to start renovating this building as soon as possible. I don't know if Ms. Kathleen wanted to say anything as it relates to the renovations, as well as, I also have Chris here. You do have in front of you a copy of the new rendering. I don't have cheesecake. This is all I have to present to you tonight, but hopefully you will see that we are really trying to maintain this and preserve it based upon our relationship with the Near East Area Commission.
No, I just, basically, want to say we have a challenge. We live in a neighborhood that was developed in the late 19th, early 20th century, and yet we live in the 21st century. So our challenge has always been, how can we hang on to some of the past and yet move on to the future? And I want to thank the Urban League because this is exactly the type of partnership we're looking for. They heard our concerns, they heard our wants, and they were willing to work with us, and we certainly thank them for the great work that they've done and for the partnership that they were willing to develop with the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Yeah?
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Brown, just want to say thank you for this legislation, and certainly thank you for the partnership. Stephanie, I've certainly been to the closed closet and very excited that you'll be able to expand the closet. If you haven't been there, go see it. And certainly, as you said, preparing men for jobs, and also the other services that will be in this brand-new building, well, this renovated building, because it's on the corner of St. Clair and Mount Vernon, right there, that building. I know exactly which one it is. So congratulations to you, and thank you for the work that you're doing in the community. Thank you.
And if I might say, the men's closet also, when it moves to that location, it will be a storefront operation. It will also give us the ability, once a month, to be able to open and sell those clothing to the community. Everything in there is donated. So all of you men here on council, I know you're outgrowing some of those suits these days, and so please feel free, exactly because of that cheesecake. So all you got to do is come down, drop them off, and we greatly appreciate being able to have them utilized by some very eager young men who want to go to work.
Great. Thank you so much for coming down, and thank you for the Huntington Empowerment Center drawings.
That is correct.
Great. Without any other questions or comment from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Pass.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. That's all I have in environment. I do want to go back to economic development.
Yes, and you will get your chance after zoning, because the hour is near for zoning. It is 6:30. So can I get a motion to recess, and then we'll take a pause here and make sure the chair's ready, and we'll go on on zoning? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We have now recessed regular meeting number 60. We'll start zoning momentarily. Regular meeting number 61 will now come to order. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
How about first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We're now going to proceed to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. I'm a member serving the committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning our agenda this evening, I briefly explained the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand to be sworn in. I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. You may be seated. 0872-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356-03(c)(4), permitted uses 3312-09 aisles, 3312-25 maneuvering, 3312-29 parking space, and 3312-49, minimum number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 718 South High Street, 43206, to permit a mixed-use development in the (c)(4) commercial district with reduced development standards. The applicant is Lutech High LOC. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. City Department's recommendation is approval. Brewery District recommended approval. I would now like to ask for a staff presentation.
Good evening. A single mixed-use structure is currently located on the property, which is Zone (c)(4) Commercial District. The requested council variance will allow the conversion of 3,070 square feet of retail space to a single-unit dwelling and 7,000 square feet to a restaurant use, with 3,210 square feet of first and second-floor patios. The existing dwelling unit on the second floor of the building will be converted into two dwelling units. The site is located within the High Street corridor subarea of the transitional tier of the Brewery District Plan, which recommends the preservation of the Brewery District's architectural and urban character through compatible redevelopment and rehabilitation. Mixed-use development has been long established on this lot and is consistent with uses that are prevalent in the surrounding area. Approval of this request will not add new or incompatible uses to the area. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? We do have one speaker speaking for this variance. I'd like to ask Mr. Michael Kelly to come down to the podium. And Mr. Kelly, you have, we have Mr. David Perry coming down.
President Klein, zoning chair, Page, and all members of council, my name is Dave Perry. I'm a consultant on this application. Michael Kelly is a principal in the developer entity, Lutech LOC. He does not need to speak unless there are questions of members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Are there any questions or comments? CNN, I would like to move for passage of this variance.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
2833-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312-27-1 parking setback line, 3321-05b2 vision clearance, and 3372-565 building lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1530 North Grant Avenue, 43201, to permit multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the AR1 Apartment Residential District, and to repeal Ordinance Number 3036-2015 passed February 22, 2016. And I would like to move to table this to January 9, 2017.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
3048-2016, to rezone 2162 Harrisburg Pike, 43123, being 1.1 acres located at the northeast corner of Harrisburg Pike and Red Rock Boulevard, from (c)(4) Commercial District and (c)(5) Commercial District to (lc)(4) Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Core Resources, Inc. The proposed use is a commercial development. City Department's recommendation is approval. Southwest Area Commission recommended approval. And I'd like to ask for a staff presentation.
The 1.1-acre site consists of portions of two parcels, is undeveloped, and is Zone (c)(4) and (c)(5) Commercial Districts. The requested (lc)(4) Limited Commercial District will allow commercial development of the site. The proposed limitation text permits all (c)(4) Commercial District uses and commits to (c)(4) development standards with additional buffering and screening. This site is located within the planning area of the Southwest Area Plan, which recommends medium-to-low-density residential uses, allowing for a variety of residential uses such as duplexes, townhomes, condominiums, and low-density apartments. The proposal is not consistent with the land use recommendations of the Southwest Area Plan, but has received recommendations of approval from the Southwest Area Commission and the Planning Division of the Department of Development. Support is warranted due to the current zoning allowing for more intense uses than proposed, and measures for preservation and enhancement of landscaping that are within the text. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I would now like to ask for a presentation from the applicant. We have Attorney Jeff Brown on behalf of the applicant, Core Resources Incorporated.
President Klein, zoning chairman, Page, members of council, my name is Jeffrey L. Brown. I'm an attorney for the applicant. We look at this as being a downzoning of the property. Most of this site is currently Zone (c)(5), which permits uses such as a gas station, car wash, drive-through. The balance of the ground is Zone (c)(4), and so what we're doing is getting rid of a more intensive use and making it compatible with the existing (c)(4) that's around us. It's an appropriate use of the property. Traffic asked us to do a traffic study that was both reviewed by the city of Columbus and Franklin County. The ordinance represents those commitments that were required by both of those entities. We appeared in front of the Southwest Area Commission. They recommended approval of the application, along with the Development Commission and city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you. We do have two speakers speaking against 3048-2016. I would like to first ask Mr. Anthony Robson, Robson, I'm sorry, to come down to the podium. And again, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and thank you for coming down this evening. down this evening.
Good evening, council. I'd like to thank you guys for letting us speak tonight. This is my fiancee, Candace Robinson. We're speaking for part of the neighborhood that is against us. Reasons being is they're wanting to bring in a family dollar into our neighborhood, which is the most crime-filled store there is. There is always getting stuff stolen from. Our neighborhood recently, within the last year, has had a lot of thefts from cars, houses, and everything else. We have been working with the Columbus Police to try to get everything straightened up. We got community watch and everything else going. When we had our community watch, we spoke with the officer about what was going to change in the front of the neighborhood. He even said it was bad for the neighborhood, letting crime, all that back in. Another thing is traffic. We're not just a one-way-in, one-way-out. We lead to another main road. So having that come in, it's already hard to get out to the main road. So everybody's going to want to cut through our neighborhood where we have children. They already fly down that road, and it's just going to bring a lot more traffic than needs to be in our neighborhood.
Thank you, council. My name is Candace Robinson. We both came from Kenau, Winchester, Groveport area, graduated, moved to Grove City, Southwest area, to get away from all the low-income housing and the crime that was going on over there. The Chatterdon Road, Gender Road, Bryce Road, a section of that area was all housing development. They opened that up and put in family dollars and Dollar Generals, and the crime rate in the housing development, property values went down over on that side of town. We moved away to get away from that area, and that's trying to be implemented back in where we're at now. We're trying to keep this as a safe place and alleviate the traffic problems that there are currently going on with children playing in the roads, things like that. Our property values are rising. We want to keep them that way, and we don't feel that they're going to be on the up and up in the area if they put this kind of commercial property in front of our subdivision.
Thank you so much for both of you coming down. Are there any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, Chairwoman Page. Just curious if you raised these concerns with the area commission. When they gave unanimous approval, I'm just surprised, knowing the concerns, quality of life that you all have expressed, that they approved it unanimously. And so just curious, your process with the area commission?
We have been working with the next speaker. She's kind of taken the reins on this, and we have just been a part of the community watch and trying to build what we could with her. We have invited our whole community to come down, and we're not sure what they whole until the whole process went in place before coming here tonight. But we did get petitions signed by a lot of people in our community that did not want this. So I think it was just maybe some lack of knowledge on how to go about this, to kind of get this going earlier on, to kind of to say, you know, our community doesn't want this. She can definitely address that, certainly, but, you know, we have a lot of names, and we took a lot of time and had signs made, put in our yards and things, that it was very much aware from our community standpoint and our subdivision, this is going to be a problem.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Jessica Bush. Again, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and thank you for coming down this evening.
Thank you, council. I'm Jessica Bush. Once we found out about this, which was later on than that meeting you spoke of, we were unaware that this was happening in our community until later on. But once we found out, we took action immediately. We work very closely with the Columbus Police Department currently and other organizations, and we have really cut down on the crime in our neighborhood. There is low-income apartments right there. It's on a bus line. I don't see any good coming of it. We already have traffic issues. I cannot believe that any traffic study would have been approved. I mean, we cannot get out of Red Rock, and we cannot get out of Blue Rock. If anything, it would, to me, would have to be a roundabout. So I'm very surprised at that. But we also have four family dollars within a five-mile radius from our house, and the slips that I gave you gave you three of those addresses. Literally, if we need a family dollar, we can go half a mile down the road and we have one. I just don't understand putting one on every single corner. It's really, it's not going to be effective to our, to our, we have so many kids, that's the other thing. They are constantly riding their bikes. So more traffic is just out of the question for letting them just ride their bikes like they currently do. There was also, in the plans, a retention pond, which showed no kind of anything around it. So our fear is that those kids that are riding their bikes could venture over to that retention pond, and I'm not sure if it stays or if it goes, but it's also in a flood zone. So my guess is they're keeping it, but I'm not sure. And I just, I really want to know a long-term building plan for our area right along Harrisburg Pike. I just feel like they're throwing in anything. Right across the street from this family dollar is two used car lots that would literally be right across the street. So I just, we don't agree with it, and none of the, you know, we're not opposed to, you know, a business going in there necessarily. It's just not the business we're looking for. It just brings too much crime to, you know, we feel it would bring additional crime to our area. And that's really all of the points that I had to make.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Bush, for coming down. And yes, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
A question, I don't know if I missed this in the first presentation, but are there actual statistics that you're pulling from, or?
For crime rates?
Right.
Yes, I have. We work very closely with an officer. He does our block watch meetings. I mean, he presents us with these bi-weekly stats on a regular basis emailed to us. So we are always aware of what's going on, and most of it, all the crimes, the highest crimes, are on commercial buildings.
But, but do you have crime rates around family dollars that you're, that you're, or is this just your perception of it? Do you know what I mean?
No, not other ones. No, not specifically. Just in our area, we did the, is the only thing that we have. It's already there, and it's, I see it only getting worse with adding that.
Okay, okay.
We've had a lot of heroin issues, all of that, and I just see them getting robbed a lot, actually.
Okay. I was just, I was just wondering if there were, if there were actually examples of other family dollars where, you know, where you saw this, this happen, and that's, or if it was a general perception that you were sort of relying on.
Right. No, that, he had mentioned, he was working more on the crime, as far as that goes in his speech, so he might know more, but I didn't take stats. I did try to get, working with the police officer, or I didn't have enough time to get in touch with ODOT, to find out car accidents, because we have several at Blue Rock, Red Rock, Alchire, Frank, right there on that strip, and I just can't imagine adding this into the mix.
Okay.
And I wasn't able to obtain that either.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
All right. Thank you.
And Ms. Bush, I have one quick question. And we did all receive this, kind of, I guess, your statement. Do you have a petition or showing what other neighbors have signed on to this?
That was submitted, yes. There was 70, I believe, 78, 79 signatures that I handed over to, for you guys to see. I have a copy of it, though.
Okay, thank you. We will, we'll get that shortly. And thank you so much for coming down.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Brown, you now have three minutes for rebuttal.
I'll let the city traffic person handle the traffic comments since they required us to do the study and everything. This is a land use issue, not a tenant-driven issue. This property has been zoned C5 and C4 since 1973. So I expect it was zoned this way before most of those people even moved into the neighborhood. What we're doing is getting rid of a more intensive use, which is the C5, which they did on the corner, and traditionally that's what you did. You put the more intensive use on the corner, which is what it's zoned now for C5. Again, that's a gas station, car wash, drive-through. We're doing retail, which is the rest of the property is already zoned for. If we wanted to move this piece off the corner, we're not even here because it's already properly zoned. I went through the process, met with the area commission. They recommended approval. They had input on the development standards, along with planning and the final texts, as a result of discussions that we've had with everybody to date, talking about landscaping, fencing, et cetera. So we think this is an appropriate use here. We have the support, as I said, of the area commission, the city staffs, and the development commission, and that's what's in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Staff would like to address the issues raised about traffic.
Yes, I could say a few words about the traffic study. This site was required to perform a traffic study, and it's probably worth noting a couple of points on that. The site will have access not only to Red Rock Boulevard, but to the intersection of Alchire and Harrisburg Pike. There is commitments in the text which state that the developer will be required to make improvements to that signalization to allow that development to have a signalized exit onto Harrisburg Pike. So there will be an access onto Red Rock Boulevard, but there also will be another access, a signalized access to Harrisburg Pike. Also, as a part of the discussions related to this development, the original access point on Red Rock Boulevard was much closer to the intersection of Harrisburg Pike and Red Rock Boulevard, but as a part of the traffic study, there was indication that there was significant queuing that was happening for traffic exiting onto Harrisburg Pike from the subdivisions that are referenced, and that access point was moved about 150 feet to the east in order to allow for the vehicles that would be waiting to get out onto Harrisburg Pike. So the applicant has made some changes to their original plan to address traffic concerns, and there will be two means of, of access for this site. So based on those information that was obtained, we're comfortable with that, that configuration.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from staff? I do have a question. On this map here, could you show us if you know where Stone Ridge Development is?
Yeah, I think it's the properties to the south in the yellow and the orange areas. That must be the Stone Ridge subdivision. No?
Okay, so the red, which should be right behind the site there.
I believe it's further down the road, off the map, if it's on that same side of the road behind the site.
But the land immediately behind the site, it at least appears to be vacant or undeveloped.
It's undeveloped, commercially zoned property behind the site.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I would like to move for passage. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Mitchell Brown.
Was the area commission aware of what particular staff was supposed to go in this particular area when you discussed all this stuff with them and the comments you received?
I don't think anybody had any objections or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brown. Seeing no more questions or comments, I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Our next few pieces are companion pieces for the real property located at 350 East Barthman Street, 3069-2016, to rezone 350 East Barthman Street, 43207, being 1.58 acres located at the northeast corner of Barthman Avenue and Washington Avenue, from R3 Residential and C4 Commercial Districts to LARO Limited Apartment Office District. The applicant is City of Columbus and Community Housing Network, Incorporated. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development and community garden slash fruit park. The city department's recommendation is approval. Columbus South Side Area Commission recommended approval. I'd like to ask for staff presentation.
The 1.5-acre site consists of 13 undeveloped parcels zoned in the R3 Residential and C4 Commercial Districts. The requested LARO Limited Apartment Office District will allow construction of a 62-unit apartment development and a community garden. Limitations in the text include commitments to a maximum density of 62 units, building height, setbacks, and site access, as well as a commitment to a site plan. The site is within the planning area of the South Side Plan, which recommends neighborhood mixed use at this location. Staff finds the proposed LARO Limited Apartment Office District is consistent with that recommendation and surrounding development patterns. A concurrent council variance, ordinance 3070-2016, has been filed to vary development standards for landscaping and screening, parking setbacks, minimum number of parking spaces required, building lines and rear yard requirements, which is consistent with other urban infill developments in this area. Therefore, staff's recommendation is approval for both of these ordinances, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We do have one speaker speaking for this variance, Mr. Walt Whitmire. He is a co-applicant representing the Community Housing Network. Mr. Dave Perry will speak on his behalf.
President Klein, zoning chair Page, and all members of council, my name is Dave Perry. I'm a consultant on this application with Community Housing Network. Zoning chair Page, Mr. Whitmire is a project manager with Community Housing Network, and unless there's questions of council, we can pass on that.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. President Protem Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Just want to say, this is, I think, it's great legislation. I know that certainly Columbus Housing Network worked with the community in terms of building, willing to build 64 units. It was part of a plan. I know the Department of Development worked with them for these pieces of land, and just really appreciate CHN for making sure that we know we have a shortage in our community of affordable housing, and so this will help with the affordable housing issue, as well as they also help provide the supportive services that go along with that. So this is a great piece of zoning, and thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you, Council Chair Page.
Thank you, President Protem. Thank you, Mr. Perry. I would first like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And then the companion piece, 3070-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 330404, permitted uses in the ARO Apartment Office District, 3312-21d1 landscaping and screening, 3312-273 parking setback line, 3312-49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3321-05b2 vision clearance, 3333-18c building lines, and 3333-24 rear yard of the Columbus City codes for the property located at 350 East Barthman Street, 43207, to permit a 62-unit apartment development and community garden fruit park with reduced development standards in the LARO Limited Apartment Office District. Again, the applicant is City of Columbus and Community Housing Network, Incorporated. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development and community garden fruit park. City Departments and Columbus South Side Area Commission both recommended approval. If there are no further questions or comments, I would first like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move for passage as amended.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
3102-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 336701 M2 manufacturing uses, 3312-25 maneuvering, 3312-29 parking space, and 3312-49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City codes for the property located at 7343 and 7349 , Worthington Galena Road, 43085, to permit a religious facility with reduced parking requirements in the M2 manufacturing district. The applicant is Vista Community Church. The proposed use is a religious facility. City Departments and- City Departments and Far North Columbus Communities Coalition both recommended approval. I now ask for staff presentation.
The site is developed with two office warehouse buildings on separate parcels in an office industrial park zoned in the M2 manufacturing district. The applicant requests a council variance to allow a church with related accessory uses in approximately 14,100 square feet of a 37,600 square foot building. The request also includes a parking space reduction of 66 required spaces and to conform an existing condition of parcel lines dividing the parking lot. The site is within the planning area of the Far North Plan, which recommends warehouse uses on the site. The balance of the building will consist of office and warehouse space as permitted in the M2 manufacturing district. While the Planning Division has some reservations about introducing institutional uses in industrial locations, the religious use would occur mainly on Sundays when the industrial park is largely unused. Therefore, staff does not believe that the introduction of a religious facility with a parking space reduction to the otherwise industrial site will create any level of conflict. Furthermore, the majority of the site will still be utilized for office and industrial uses. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments for staff? Seeing none, I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. 3112-2016, to rezone 5300 Avery Road, 43016, being 28.19 acres located on the east side of Avery Road, 1,890 feet south of Care Road, from our rural district to CPD Commercial Plan Development District and LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Edwards Communities Development Company. The proposed use is a commercial and multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. I would first like to move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I now move to table until January 23, 2017.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And our final variance, 3113-2016, which I also would like to move to table to January 23, 2017.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all we have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Page, Chair Page. Any other business to come before council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 61? Zoning meeting number 61 has been moved in second, and clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. We will reconvene regular meeting number 60 momentarily. Can I get a motion to reconvene, I'm sorry, to, yes, reconvene regular meeting number 60? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand back in regular meeting number 60. We were beginning the Economic Development Committee. It's chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. First, in economic development, we have ordinance 2983-2016, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a dual-rate jobs growth incentive with BDO USA LLP for a term of up to seven consecutive years, in consideration of investing an estimated $515,000, retaining 45 full-time permanent positions, and creating 235 new full-time permanent positions within the next three years. BDO is what I like to call a meta-accountant firm. They are the accountant firms for the accountant firm, the accountant firm for the accountant firms. They will contract with other firms to manage their more standard accounting work while those firms will retain the more complex accounting duties in-house. So, the Department of Development is recommending a dual-rate jobs growth incentive, and the number of jobs, as I said, are 235. The average salary is $34,000 annually, which works out to 1634 hourly. We have a couple agreements on our, a couple pieces of legislation on our agenda tonight, Director, that have to do with the financial services sector. This has come up this year before. You've talked about the growth of that sector here in Columbus and its importance and the overall diversity of our economy. So, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to, kind of as a year-end assessment, provide that perspective to my colleagues here tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, President Klein, members of council. It has been a very good year for us in the financial services industry. Just tonight, we have 1,235 new jobs coming to the City of Columbus over the next three years. This doesn't count the jobs that we announced, I think, or that we took to council, I think it was either early this month or last month, for Morgan Stanley. This does not include the investments that JP Morgan Chase is making to maintain their facilities up at the McCoy Center, up at Polaris, and their facilities at Easton. We are having a very good year in terms of this industry. Part of what we're seeing is that in this industry is very much, it's as much an IT industry as it is a financial services industry. So, we're seeing growth in that entire cluster. That's some of what we saw last year, and we're very excited about.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, in economic development, we have ordinance 3040-2016, to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Development Taxable Bonds Fund and the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contribution agreement with Wood GP Limited and 711 LLC for a neighborhood structured parking incentive, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a construction guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement for reimbursement of utility costs, to authorize the expenditure of $1,268,843 within the Development Taxable Bonds Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $231,157 within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. I want to remind my colleagues that this, the components of this legislation, we discussed during the EDA that we approved with the Wood Company earlier this year, and this is, these are sort of the next steps being taken under agreements made in that EDA. So, the city is agreeing to reimburse the developer for the 125 parking spaces that will be dedicated for public use and for the electric utility work that they will do in Wall and Pearl alleys in order to complete their project. Are there any other questions? Okay, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, in economic development, we have ordinance 3107-2016, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a dual-rate jobs growth incentive with Butler Animal Health Supply LLC, doing business as Henry Schein Animal Health, for a term of up to five consecutive years, in consideration of investing an estimated $1,284,000 and creating 25 new full-time permanent positions. Butler Animal Health Supply is a distributor of supplies for veterinarians. It currently has 12 distribution centers across the country, and this legislation represents the company's transition to a sort of hub-and-spoke model, with their new Columbus location becoming the hub at the center of their various distribution operations. Again, the number of jobs is 25, and the average annual salary is $31,326 annually. This is in the, just north of the Greater Hilltop Area Commission District. Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmembers?
Just really fast, thank you, Madam Chair. Director, what type of jobs are anticipated?
Thank you, Members Stenziano, President Klein, members of council. These are typical distribution and logistics fulfillment jobs.
Are there any other questions? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, in economic development, we have ordinance 3114-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an economic development agreement with Kaufman Development for the redevelopment of the property located at 450 West Broad Street and 462 through 500 West Broad Street. This development is occurring on the Wasserstrom Warehouse and Phillips Coney Island sites. It will be a mixed-use project that will contain approximately 50,000 square feet of Class A office space, 30,000 square feet of retail, 250 multifamily residential units, and 564, 564 space structured parking garage. Of that 564 spaces, a minimum of 200 spaces will be for public use. Are there any questions for my colleagues about the EDA or the project? Yeah, Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, reading the legislation, because I'm concerned about losing the Phillips Coney Island, notice there's an agreement to run services through the Division of Power as the primary provider for 10 years. After 10 years, what happens or what typically happens in those kind of agreements?
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano, Chair Brown, President Klein, members of council. And first of all, we will ensure that there are good places for you to get a lunch in that area of town. I know it's a favorite. In terms of the agreement for City of Columbus Power, MELP to provide the service, they will provide service for 10 years. I'm sure that Director Davies and her team will provide excellent service at a effective cost, and they will retain them after 10 years, but the company will have choice after those 10 years for the developer.
Other questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, we have a few pieces of legislation that have to do with Huntington and the exciting announcement that was made just a couple weeks ago concerning their investment in Northland, continuing reinvestment in the City of Columbus. So, before I read those pieces of legislation, I wanted to give Director Shoney an opportunity to, from his perspective, tell us more about this deal and about the work with Huntington. We also do have a representative from Huntington here if there are questions for my colleagues in addition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Klein, members of council. I could go on for a long time about this project, and I won't because we have a full agenda and it's late, but this is, I've been in this business for about 20 years, and this is honestly one of the most exciting projects I've worked on. And it's not because it's 1,000 jobs. I've had the privilege to work on projects like that before, but it is the fact that you have a community partner that is coming and bringing 1,000 jobs to the Cleveland Avenue corridor, reinvesting in that corridor because they're already there, and partnering with us to bring $300 million of additional community benefit to our low and moderate income neighborhoods. They are coming full force with their lending programs, programs to help our community. They are going to be doing lending for homeowners. They're going to be lending, doing lending to help encourage those who are renting in the area to improve their properties. They're going to be coming in with small business lending. They're going to be coming in and helping us, and we're working very closely with Councilmember Harden and the Small Business Committee to develop new programming for small business. This is a unique project, and I don't think it's a coincidence that Stephanie Hightower was coming in and talking earlier about the Huntington Empowerment Center. This is not the first time that this corporation has made this kind of a commitment to our community, but it is a very exciting opportunity. I'd like to thank Barbara Benham personally in front of you. She, this really was a true partnership of Barbara and her team, and me and my team sitting down and saying, we have the opportunity to do something great and something special. And if it were not for her dedication, the dedication of her CEO, Steve Steinhour, we wouldn't be here tonight, or we'd be here doing a, we'd be here doing a good deal. Tonight, we're here doing a great thing.
Thank you, Director. And you spoke to this, but this, this deal represents a lot of jobs being created, so that's the work that you and your department do on an everyday basis, but it also represents a lot of other kinds of reinvestment in low to moderate mortgage lending, in small business lending. So, there are committees that each of my colleagues chair that really are all at play in this deal, so I want to thank you for your hard work in partnering with Huntington. Are there comments from my colleagues?
Chairwoman Brown, just want to say to you and to Director Shoney that this is significant legislation, and it's significant because, you're right, it is going to be in the London community and the Northland community. And certainly, I think, we as councilmembers realize that we need to continue to invest in the London community. And certainly, for an organization to partner with the city to help us to invest in the London community and in the Northland community is significant. And we certainly have needed a catalyst to continue to help us support the work that's already happening in London, but this, these additional dollars will be able to support the businesses, the individuals that are in their homes getting loans up to $3,000 at a very, very, very low interest rate. And so, I'm just excited about the partnership, and thank you for your hard work, and thank you for the, as you mentioned, the number of jobs that you are discussing tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Brown.
Thanks so much. The next three pieces of legislation are apropos to the conversation we just had. First ordinance, 3115-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an economic development agreement with Huntington National Bank to facilitate the development of approximately 212,000 square feet of administrative office space and associated parking at the property located at 5555 Cleveland Avenue, to be used by Huntington and promote further growth and expansion of Huntington's corporate headquarters and operational centers within the City of Columbus. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is 3116-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a jobs growth incentive agreement with Huntington National Bank, a banking association, Huntington Bankshares Incorporated, Huntington Insurance Incorporated, Huntington Investment Company, and Huntington Technology Finance Incorporated, equal to 35% of the amount of new income tax withheld above the baseline on new employees to Columbus as of December 31, 2016, for a term up to six consecutive years capped annually and not to exceed $15 million, in consideration of the company's proposed investment of $19.5 million and the creation of 1,000 new full-time permanent positions by 2024, and also investing an additional 300 million in community-based lending initiatives. Any questions for my colleagues? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is 3117-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with the Huntington National Bank, a banking association, Huntington Bankshares Incorporated, Huntington Insurance Incorporated, Huntington Investment Company, and Huntington Technology Finance Incorporated, for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years, in consideration of a proposed total investment of $19.5 million and the creation of 1,000 new full-time permanent positions. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Before I call the final roll, I just would like to recognize the community investment that Huntington is making and the great work the Department of Development has done under your leadership, Chair. And we have a wonderful corporate community, and it's certainly led by Huntington and a few others. And Huntington, I know they're representative tonight. Barbara Benham is here. Thank you for being the community player that you are, because this deal has transcended just a good deal for job creation, and is one that can be transformative to small business lending, transformative to low and moderate income housing needs, and can really change the dynamic in neighborhoods that significantly need it. Not to mention, there's not too many times that you are going to be able to renovate an entire Meyer complex, and being able to revitalize and reuse a very large grocery store, and being able to not have to demo, renovate, invest, and keep a community going and keep... and keep what momentum is there going, but being able to spread it in a good way, that investment across neighborhoods. So, clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Thanks, President Klein. Next, in economic development, we have ordinance 3118-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with 711 LLC and Wood GP Limited for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years in consideration of a proposed total investment of $40.5 million in new construction and the creation of seven new full-time permanent positions. A reminder that this also was part of the terms of the economic development agreement that we previously considered. Are there any questions for the Director or for myself about this one? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, in economic development, we have ordinance 3120-2016 to create a tax increment finance agreement on, or tax increment financing on certain parcels of real property in the Bryce Road area to be known as the Bryce Road TIF, to declare improvements to those parcels to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, and to declare an emergency. With the creation of this TIF, we are putting another tool in place for Bryce Road and the Bryce Road corridor that will help to create an emergent effect on development in that corridor. Are there any questions from my colleagues about this? Director?
Thank you, Chair Brown, President Klein, members of council. Just two quick things. First of all, this really is just setting the stage. This is having us put in place the tools. We think there are opportunities for growth in this neighborhood and in this area, and we're setting the stage for that. Also, I can't talk about the Bryce Road corridor without publicly thanking Steve Lindsay. He does so much for that neighborhood, particularly in the development area, and setting the stage for us with growth, and he's been part of our discussions with this, so I'd like to publicly recognize him.
Thank you. I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, in economic development, we have ordinance 3121-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an economic development agreement with Sciota Peninsula Holdings Limited and Columbus Downtown Development Corporation for the redevelopment of the city-owned property on the Sciota Peninsula. This legislation contains the economic development agreement that will be the guidepost for some ambitious redevelopment of the Sciota Peninsula, which is, you know, contained in the area between the River, Broad, Bell, and the railroad tracks. CDDC has committed to engage with the public about the development plans that take forth, or that come forth. Any questions about that one? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, in economic development, we have ordinance 3177-2016 to authorize the Director of Development to amend the Columbus Downtown Office Incentive Agreement with ODW Logistics Incorporated, the job retention commitment from 62 full-time permanent positions with an associated payroll of approximately $5,555,754 to 54 full-time permanent positions with an associated payroll of approximately $5,048,000, and to declare an emergency. I want to just note and remind everyone that this ordinance lowers the number of retained jobs reflected in their incentive agreement by eight, but it does not represent actual job loss. These eight employees are merely going to remain at ODW's warehouse campus on Williams Road rather than transfer to the new location. Are there any questions beyond that? I move for passage.
Second.
I am moving to do that. I'm requesting to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And now, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, I'd like to go back to page 10 to consent, and Councilmember Stenziano has an item in economic development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bring forward item 0300X-2016 to accept the recommendation of the 2016 Columbus Tax Incentive Review Council regarding the continuation, modification, or cancellation of all property tax incentives based on the evaluation of reporting year 2015 and declare an emergency. This annual City of Columbus Tax Incentive Review Council held a meeting on August 17, 2016, to evaluate the compliance status of the city's property tax-related incentives for reporting year 2015. The Ohio Revice Code stipulates that on the basis of the determinations of the Turk or on or before the first Saturday of September of each year, the Turk must submit in the legislative authority written recommendations for continuation, modification, or cancellation of each agreement. Additionally, a legislative authority that receives such recommendations must hold a meeting and vote to accept, reject, or modify all or any portion of the recommendations. In a memorandum from the Director of the Department of Development to council dated August 31, 2016, the results of the Turk were presented as the 2016 Columbus Turk Summary of Recommendations. A meeting was then held in September between representatives from council and the Department of Development to review the recommendations, and this resolution is requested to be considered to fulfill the stipulations set forth in Sections 5709.85 of the Ohio Revice Code, and by this resolution will be accepting the recommendations. I don't know if the Director has anything additional to add, but it's a new process that I had not been a part of before.
So, just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to recognize and thank Kelsey Ellingson for her service on the Tax Incentive Review Council. She was council's representative on that body, so I'd like to thank Kelsey for that. Our team reviewed 59 agreements that were in our enterprise zone, community reinvestment, and TIF toolbox. Those 59 agreements reported the following performance overall: they created 301% of the projected jobs, they created 297 projected new jobs, excuse me, 297% of the projected new payroll, and 127% of the projected investment. It is a very inclusive process. We make sure in particular to include our partners with the various school districts that we work with. In this year's Turk process, we actually had seven school districts involved for incentives that were offered in the various school districts that we have to work with. We are working through four projects that were not fully in compliance, and we're working to either get them in compliance or make modifications to their agreements. That's all.
Thank you, Director. Do any of my colleagues have a question? Councilmember Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. I too want to applaud Kelsey for sitting on the Turk. I had the pleasure of doing that a couple of times, and it is the longest, most boring day that I think any city employee, or anybody, will go through. But what I do appreciate is how thorough of a conversation that we have, that we work with our community that receive these tax incentives to encourage or to track and to make sure that those incentives are actually being honored. It's something that I don't think the public gets to see, us going back and checking every year, but like I said, I've drawn the short string a couple of times in the past, and certainly appreciate those who take the time to do that important work.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden, but with all due respect, I think my colleagues have just sat and listened to me for half an hour, so they might quibble with the longest day, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, first, I'd like to amend to 30-day legislation.
Second.
And call for a voice vote.
Clerk, call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to waive a second reading and again, request a voice vote.
Clerk, call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to move for adoption and again, request a voice vote.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes.
Thank you, President Klein. I will happily return the agenda back to Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. May I move to Administration Committee? In Administration tonight, we have several large items. You'll be hearing some big numbers. And to start with is ordinance 3081-2016 to make appropriations for the 12 months ending January 31, 2018 for the funding of the City Employee Insurance Program and to declare an emergency. This legislation sets the appropriations for the City of Columbus insurance programs. The current utilization and projected future claims were analyzed and trended on the basis of an 18-month trend of actual city utilization in conjunction with industry trends. I want to thank Director Nikki Brandon and her department for the hard work that they put in every year to do really exacting analysis for us. The 2017 appropriations reflect a 6.9% increase overall from the real spend in 2016, and this increase is in line with the national trend, which is 6.7%. Are there any questions from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 3082-2016 to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with United Healthcare Insurance Company and to provide all eligible employees medical insurance coverage from February 1, 2017, to January 31, 2018, and to authorize the expenditure of $133,747,834 from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the costs of said contract, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance extends the city's contract with UHC and authorizes the anticipated healthcare expenditure for the 2017 year. Like several of the following ordinances within Administration Committee tonight, the $133 million associated with this piece of legislation will be drawn from the piece that we previously authorized, just appropriated in 3081-2016. Any questions from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, in Administration, we have 3087-2016 to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with Optum RX to provide all eligible employees prescription drug insurance coverage from February 1, 2017, through January 31, 2018, and to authorize the expenditure of $47,650,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the costs of said contract, and to declare an emergency. This appropriates money for our prescription drug coverage. Seeing no questions, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have 3088-2016 to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into contract with Delta Dental Plan of Ohio Incorporated to provide all eligible employees dental insurance coverage from February 1, 2017, through January 31, 2018, to authorize the expenditure of $8,097,365 from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the costs of said contract, and to declare an emergency. This is a new contract with Delta Dental. These contracts are for three-year cycles with their extensions included, and this represents the initiation of a third cycle with Delta. Any questions? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 3089-2016 to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into contract with Delta Dental Plan, I'm sorry, to authorize, these all start to look a little bit alike, if you haven't noticed, to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into contract with Vision Service Plan to provide all eligible employees Vision Plan Administration from February 1, 2017, through January 31, 2018, to authorize the expenditure of $1,040,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the costs of said contract, and to declare an emergency. This is also a new contract, one which was retained by VSP. The cost growth for this particular contract was only around 2% from last year. Any questions? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 3090-2016 to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into contract with Dearborn National to provide all eligible employees short-term disability insurance coverage from February 1, 2017, through January 31, 2018, and to authorize the expenditure of $3,240,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the costs of said contract, and to declare an emergency. This is a new contract with Dearborn. Any questions from my colleagues? Next, we, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 3092-2016 to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into contract with Dearborn National Life Insurance Company to provide all eligible employees life insurance coverage from February 1, 2017, through January 31, 2018, and to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the costs of said contract, and to declare an emergency. Currently, city employees receive their life insurance coverage through Consumers Life. The city went out to bid this contract this past summer and moved forward with Dearborn as its new provider. With this new contract, the city is paying $200,000 less than it paid for life insurance in 2016. Any questions? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Yeah, we are. Next is 3189-2016 to accept the memorandum of understanding, number 2016-006, executed between representatives of the city and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Ohio Council 8, Local 1632, which amends the collective bargaining agreement April 1, dated April 1, 2014, through March 31, 2017, and to declare an emergency. This is the first of two ordinances that concern the trading of classifications between AFSMI and CWA and the Division of Refuse. This ordinance abolishes the refuse container assembler and repair position from CWA's bargaining unit and incorporates the refuse collection supervisor. The next ordinance will carry out the complementary actions regarding the same positions within AFSMI's unit. Any questions? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have ordinance 3191-2016 to accept memorandum of understanding, number 2016-009, executed between representatives of the city and Communication Workers of America, CWA, Local 4502, which amends the collective bargaining agreement dated April 24, 2014, through April 23, 2017, and to declare an emergency. Any questions? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And finally, in Administration, we have 3196-2016 to accept memorandum of understanding, number 2016-04, executed between representatives of the City of Columbus and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Ohio Council 8, AFSMI, Local 1632, which amends the collective bargaining agreement April 1, 2014, through March 31, 2017, and to declare an emergency. This is in order to comply with increases in the state minimum wage effective in January. Any questions from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That is all I have in my committee, is President Klein.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee is Public Safety. It's chaired by Councilwoman Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, I have at least two pieces of legislation in Public Safety. Ordinance number 30212016 to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds within the Safety Bond Fund, to authorize the Director Finance and Management Director to issue purchase orders to Sutren Corporation for four Sutren Monarch Custom Pompers and one Sutren Aerial Platform Ladder Truck for the division of fire from the existing cooperative state of Ohio term contract with Sutren Corporation to authorize the expenditure from the Safety Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The authorized expenditure is $3,599,730.40. I move for passage unless there's any questions.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have Ordinance number 3041206 to authorize the Director Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase orders to Horton Emergency Vehicles for the purchase of three Horton EMS transport vehicles and for the repair and recondition of one existing Horton EMS transport vehicle for the Division of Fire from an existing Cooperative State of Ohio Term Contract with Horton Emergency Vehicles to authorize the expenditure from the Safety Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The authorized figure is $1,061,625. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, I do have one ordinance to introduce from the floor, if I may. It is Ordinance 3252016 to accept the memorandum of understanding number 201601 executed between the City of Columbus and the Columbus Firefighters, Local 67, IAF, which amends the collective bargaining agreement November 1st, 2014 through October 31st, 2017, and to declare an emergency. Director Pettis, would you speak to this legislation, please?
President Klein, Safety Chair Brown, members of council, thank you so much. This ordinance helps to both restructure and expand our EMS delivery system. In 1996, the Division of Fire put into place the EMS model we are working with today. At that time, our staffing of 1,269 firefighters was designed to handle the run volume for that time, roughly 62,000 calls for service. The run volume is now 133,000 runs, an increase in work of 115%, and staffing has only increased to 1,535 firefighters. In a nutshell, the current system has exceeded its limit and places too great a burden on our very hard-working paramedics. We are restructuring the staffing on our EMS transport vehicles. This new system will have one paramedic and one EMT basic on the EMS transport vehicle. Staffing on the engine companies will continue to have at least one firefighter paramedic. Nothing will change as to the level of care. Every EMS transport vehicle and every engine company will remain ALS vehicles. This system gives us the flexibility and sustainability to expand to meet the future demands of our ever-growing city. With respect to expansion, in order to meet our current and future demand for services, a class of 25 is starting on December 19th, 2016, which brings this year's total to 65 new firefighters. Proposed in the city's 2017 budget, there will be two classes of 40 in 2017, the largest total number of new firefighters in years. The expansion of five formerly part-time, peak-demand medic units to full-time status, 365, 24/7, in five of our highest-demand neighborhoods. Creation of three new EMS supervisors for additional oversight of patient-quality care. Rebuilding and opening of Station 2 in the spring, which will also add an additional medic and will make a ladder truck permanent. And in 2018, we will open Station 35, the first newly-built station since 2003. So, on behalf of the Department of Public Safety, I thank Mayor Ginther and City Council for making public safety our number-one priority, as shown by the significant investment in personnel, training, apparatus, and fire stations. Thank you.
Director, could you also elaborate for this council what the response times are for fire to an emergency based on the calls coming from 911?
I don't have specific statistics for this year. We're working on our annual report, but I do know that the NFPA standard 1710 calls for an eight-minute response time from the time someone calls 911 till arrival on the scene of the first units. And we have an excellent response time history in the City of Columbus, in fact, one of the best in the nation. And so, this restructuring will enable us to continue to meet the demands of our growing city.
Any questions for my colleagues? Hearing none, I'd like to pass along, would you please pass to the IAFF. Thank you for their cooperation in working with the city to amend and change the way in which the collective bargaining agreement has been structured to enhance the care for citizens of Columbus. It's appreciated. Hearing no other questions, I move for passage.
Before I call the roll, I do want to recognize Dave Montgomery, the president of Local 67. I see him in the back and thank him and his executive leadership team in moving this forward and being the partner that they are with the success of the City of Columbus in mind. So, thank you, President Montgomery. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have in public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. The next committee is Public Service and Transportation. It's chaired by Councilmember Harden. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation, we have Ordinance 3038-2016 to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Complete General Construction for Bridge Rehabilitation, Morse Road under Norfolk Southern Railroad Project, and to provide for the payment of inspection services in connection with the project, to authorize expenditure of up to $1,296,751 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Service enter into contract with Complete General Construction for Bridge Rehabilitation. Complete General Construction was the lowest bidder on this project. This project consists, will improve two railroad bridges over Morse Road just west of I-71. This includes concrete, patching, sealing, and painting. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, may I move to Rules and Reference? In Rules and Reference, I have Ordinance 3025-2016 to create the Office of Diversity and Inclusion and establish its functions and duties, to amend Section 211-03 of the Columbus City Codes, to repeal the existing chapters of Title 39 and replace those chapters through the enactment of new Columbus City Code, Chapter 3901, Definitions, 3902, Organization, 3903, Assistance Activities, 3904, Good Faith Efforts, 3905, Contractor Registration, Certification, and Reporting, 3906, Department Contracting Agency Responsibility, and 3907, Other Provisions, and to declare an emergency. This allows the city to replace the Equal Business Opportunity Commission Office with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion in order to more effectively assist minority and women-owned businesses. As a result of this organization, reorganization, there is need to consolidate some existing Title 39 provisions and eliminate other provisions that are redundant or obsolete. First, I would ask Chief Francis to give us an overview of the, the proposed changes to Title 39.
Thank you, Chairman Harden, President Klein, President Potem Tyson. The, first of all, I want to thank the City Attorney's Office for its support in trying to make sense out of the old Title 39. It was quite a mess and a lot of stuff that didn't apply. So, in their wisdom, they felt it was easier to eliminate the whole old Title 39 and replace it with these revisions. And I think we reduced it from maybe 48 pages down to 16 or something like that. So, just based on the reduction of paper, we're, we're very glad to simplify it. But we believe that it will be a baseline for further enhancements that are going to come down the road. But for now, we need to operate as the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And it did serve to expand it well beyond the functions of the formerly known as Equal Business Opportunity Commission. And so, it does that reference Workforce Diversity Authority and the, there are some other programs that we want to add that will expand the access to financial assistance for our certified businesses. And so, we've already launched a pilot of one of those programs, and it's met with a lot of success. And we've had minority businesses and women-owned businesses through those programs, and they're very appreciative of what they, they see and excited about the future of this program. We, we also wanted to change the female business classification to women-business enterprise classification. That's just a more politically correct way to refer to women that own businesses. But these changes did require a comprehensive review of the whole thing to make sure that it made sense and that it provided a platform for growth going forward, as we continue to add things like goals from the disparity study and other special programs that we might need to add to eliminate any disparity that that study might find.
Thank you, Chief Francis. We have two folks who have signed up to speak on this legislation. First, I will call Mr. Lawrence Als. Mr. Als, good evening. If you would give your full name and address and any organization you may represent.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you, sir.
It's A-U-L-S, and that's a German-Jewish name, but it's Als, but it's like A-L-L-S. And I represent the NAACP Labor and Industry Committee, and it deals with jobs and discrimination. It's not really in opposition to the legislation, but some language in it. And there's a statement that will be read by the chairman of our Economic Development Committee next. My point was to say that the NAACP is very serious about the statistics that you're going to hear, because for the last 20 years, the performance of black folks having access to jobs and business opportunity is awful. But we came in the spirit of helping to solve the problem, not just identify it. We also came with the statement of being determined to do something about it and looking for partners with which to do it with. So, with that said, we are aware, and I guess this is what the white hair allows me to address, we've heard similar songs, different programs, over a long period of time. The question is, is there anything of substance that is different in its concept and its implementation? And it may be important for you to talk to us older heads that can tell you whether or not what you're proposing to do is to likely work. As I said, I'm a volunteer, pull back out to make sure that what we've learned over the last 50 years, speaking for myself, has value so that it doesn't repeat itself with good intentions and poor performance. With that, thank you. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for my colleagues? Mr. Als, if it's all right, I'm going to have Chief Francis and maybe even the city attorney respond, but I would like to get Mr. Ambrose to speak and then have, have back and forth.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Next, I have Mr. Ambrose Moses. Would you please come forward and state your name, address, and any organization that you may represent?
President Klein, members of council, I am Ambrose Moses III. I am here today as chairman of the NAACP Economic Development Committee. I also serve the community as a lawyer advising, counseling, and representing small businesses, adverse clientele. The NAACP opposes two aspects of the ordinance, 3025-2016. One, the definitions of minority business enterprise and minority group members as set forth in the current Columbus City Code, Section 3901.01G, should not be repealed and replaced until after and only if warranted by the disparity study that the city intends to perform in 2017. Under the existing law, the definition of minority group members must be amended through legislation by city council and approved by the mayor to either include or exclude other ethnic groups only if a legally sufficient factual predicate exists to warrant such inclusion or exclusion. That is one of the purposes of the disparity study. Even without the disparity study, we know that African-Americans represent 28% of the population in Columbus and that the City of Columbus's overall utilization of African-American-owned businesses is only 3.1%. So, just based upon that, there's clearly a problem. That is why the proposed change in the definitions before the disparity study has been completed is so alarming to us and to the African-American business community. The Columbus NAACP simply asks that the definitions of minority business enterprise and minority group members as set forth in the current statute, 3901.01G, not be repealed and replaced until after the disparity study has been completed and the results have been reviewed and made public. The second item is the Columbus NAACP believes that the proposed repeal and replacement of Title 39 is not an emergency ordinance and should not be treated as such. While there was a public hearing on the proposed legislation and the NAACP was able to have a meeting jointly with Representatives of City Council, the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, and the mayor's office, there is a need to notify and include more Columbus residents and Columbus area stakeholders in the discussion and process. Under these circumstances, we think that declaring an emergency and pushing the legislation through is not the best approach to take. There's no harm in utilizing the full legislative process to include more parties in the discussion. And with that, I will entertain any question that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. First, Chief Francis, would you speak to why we are moving this piece of legislation as emergency? Mr. Moses, I certainly want to thank you for the work that we've done over the last couple of weeks as we worked on this legislation. You were at the public hearing that we had a few weeks ago where we talked about these changes and kind of where they came from. And I truly appreciated the thoughtful dialogue that we have had with the NAACP under the leadership of Ms. Nana Watson. But first, I would like to have Chief Francis speak to why this is emergency. Two, to hit on the, the first point that Mr. Moses brought up as to why we're making the change. And then I asked the city attorney to, to, to cap out, to, to give their opinion, because we, that's what it came down to. For me, to put this legislation forward, was the advice of, of the city attorney. Thank you. Chief.
Thank you, Chair Harden. It was the advice of the auditor, city auditor, that we proceeded with haste to get this statute revised and amended before the end of the fiscal year. And today was the last city council meeting that was available for passage of legislation before January 1st effective date of that legislation. So, although it may seem to be sudden, it, it was very meticulous and a long process that got us to this point. And I believe that all the proper notices were given. And in fact, as you said, Mr. Ambrose was here during the public hearing. I don't believe there was any testimony from him, but I believe a notice was given to the NAACP and others, other constituents. And, and so, I believe it has to be labeled as emergency to meet that deadline before the end of this fiscal year. end of this fiscal year. The minority business enterprise definition just had African-American for several years, many years, maybe 10, 12, 13. And while I appreciate the statistics provided by Mr. Moses, I don't believe that the statute having that definition of African-Americans only is directly related to the relatively low percentage of utilization of 3.1%. In fact, it should be maybe the opposite if that definition had any relevance. So we're going to work extra hard, to Mr. Alls' point, to make sure that the old way of trying to achieve these goals is not repeated. And I appreciate his concern about having good intentions but poor performance. We want to have outstanding performance, and we believe this revisions is the foundation for paving the way for that excellent performance that we expect from ourselves and that the mayor actually expects from me as his chief diversity officer.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to make one clearer point about what this legislation does in terms of the The disparity study that the chief and the Office of Diversity and Inclusion will perform over the next year will set, will give us a basis of creating goals or not. This piece of legislation deals with all other things outside of contracting utilization. This deals with the support services that the Department of the Office of Diversity and Inclusion will have. And so it is our opinion that for chief to have the authority to work in those other areas, not just the contracting utilization, which will 100% follow whatever the disparity study says that we move forward with this. So I just want to make that piece clear moving forward. City Attorney, do you have anything else to add?
If I may ask Attorney Moses a question, could you please again reiterate your opposition to the definition being proposed for minority groups? What is that opposition? I'm failing to understand how that affects what might be happening later in disparity study.
The way the legislation is currently set up, in order to include other groups or to exclude any groups, the city council has to base that upon a sufficiently, legally sufficient factual predicate.
But isn't, I'm sorry, I didn't let you finish.
Which the disparity study, we believe, would be the basis for that.
Well, but doesn't the disparity study come after the fact of definition? Are you saying that there's only one minority group that would qualify for a disparity study?
No. The disparity study would be done to determine what groups, if any, have been subjected to discrimination and what remedies might be needed in order to address that. And so if the disparity study does identify other groups other than African-American, then city council can then enact legislation to add those groups to the MBE classification under 3901.01.
How do you know which groups to study in the disparity study until you determine which groups you want to study? And isn't that the purpose of the definition of groups to study?
I would say no. I mean, if you limited it to only the groups that are currently in the statute, you would never add any additional groups. I think that the study would be to determine if there are any disparities that exist upon any minority groups.
So if it's limited now, we wouldn't be doing disparity studies on Native Americans, on women, right?
You would. You would do a study that would involve any minorities within that jurisdiction.
So what's the problem then in defining minority groups and then doing the disparity study to determine, based on the evidence that the disparity study shows, as to whether any of those minority groups have been historically discriminated against in the award of contracts?
Well, I think that when you look at the fact that there's a long history concerning the issue of discrimination or disparity in the city of Columbus in terms of the different lawsuits over the years.
Well, let me stop you. No facts have come out yet that prove that. There are certainly assertions that so.
Right.
That's why a disparity study will either affirm that or disabuse people of that notion.
Right. And see, and that's one of the things you may say is sort of anecdotal, not a lot of statistics in it. But when many of these issues were first brought up back in the 80s, I was still in school. Then, you know, years later, I go through college, come out of law school, and now we're having the various lawsuits that were being filed, the associated general contractors.
But what happened to that lawsuit?
And, well, as I researched it.
It said we didn't have a predicate study that showed historic discrimination against a particular group.
Well, and I think that, well, there was a couple of things that, as I researched it over the weekend, that sort of piqued my attention on it, was the fact that there was, it appeared from the case law that there was an agreement between the city and the plaintiff agreeing that there was, that the legislation was unconstitutional.
No, I don't know that, I don't know that that's factual.
Well, what I'm saying is that.
I believe a court said, I believe a United States District Court judge of the Southern District of Ohio said, "You haven't proven with a, you haven't proven the historic discrimination that you're alleging. You haven't done a study yet."
I was, well, what I'm referencing is a Sixth Circuit, it was an appeals court decision where they made reference to the fact that the parties, the city and the contractors association, had agreed.
Agreed to do what?
Mr. Ambrose.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, City Attorney. I think that.
Let me just say this. I believe that the concerns that you're expressing, while I understand them, are not founded correctly. I think you will find that what you're looking for in the end is whether or not, if this legislation passes and there is a disparity study done, then you're looking for the results of the disparity study. If they show historic discrimination, for this council then to set up remedies. And the disparity study could show that there's historic discrimination against women, against Native Americans, against other groups besides African-Americans, perhaps. But we don't know what it is until that study's done.
What I'm looking for, just sort of as a base resolution, is that we not end 20, 30 years down the road in the same situation that we're in today, which is 20, 30 years down the road from the 1980s. And I think that by eliminating the definition of minority business enterprise and minority group members in the way that it's being proposed sets us up for that circumstance.
But how, I'm sorry.
Because the way the statute is set up, it can be changed based upon a factual, sufficient factual predicate.
A study.
Study.
Well, but that study comes after the definition.
Well, and I appreciate.
The study is used to include or exclude other groups in that category. So we have, we have the definition that does have African-Americans in it currently.
Right.
But in order to include others, there has to be a study.
No, 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 no. To include others in a remedial piece of legislation would have to be shown if there was facts demonstrated that the historic discrimination exists against those groups. So the definition of minority group does not prohibit a subsequent disparity study to take a look at all minority groups, right?
The way that.
No, no, isn't it so that we don't, isn't it so? What? You want to quit? You want to give it up? What? No?
Well, no, this is the thing. I appreciate Mr. Moses coming down, and I appreciate the work that you've done over the last several weeks and the time that you've put into this. What we look forward to doing is working with the NAACP and all interested parties as we, as a city, make sure that we have the most inclusive policies moving forward. I think the disparity study over the next year will help us get there. The sincerity and the depth and the thought that you put into working with us is greatly appreciated. And thank you, Mr. Moses.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Brown.
Mr. Francis, Director Francis, can you speak to the issue about the movement towards the disparity study? Where is this? Yes, Councilmember Brown. Last week, we completed interviews of finalists for completing this disparity study. And that evaluation committee is in the process of reaching out to those finalists to make a determination of who won that bidding process. We plan to move swiftly to an award and have, before this council in January, some legislation for the actual contract with that firm, whoever it is. So we had three minority firms out of the four that were finalists, and we're very excited about their capability and experience. And they've survived legal challenges to those studies, so we're very excited about the group of finalists we have, and we think that this process going forward will be very beneficial to the city and to minority contractors.
And upon completion of this study, of course, you will share that with all these council members so that they know exactly what the recommendations are?
Absolutely. And we plan to have a public forum with that contractor explaining to the community and to business owners what this disparity study process is and how long it will take and how they, as business owners, will be a part of that research to arrive at the exact issue related to any disparity.
And will there be measurable goals in this particular disparity study?
That study will issue a recommendation which, if there is a disparity found, there will be a percentage that they will recommend we put in our statutes to correct it. And just one additional comment, one of the finalists is an expert in drafting programs, so it could be that they would actually help us make sure that as we revise our statute in the future, it is, again, airtight and will survive any legal challenge. So again, we're excited.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Chairman Harden. I think I'm going to ask what I believe is a simple question, and I'm hoping that it is, and if it's complex, we'll continue. But if council chooses to pass the ordinance as submitted to council tonight, and this question is directed either to the city attorney or to the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, will we be able to, under the current form that's being presented, still be able to identify and use the measurable goals to put in place a practical result to increase African-American participation in our contracting in the city of Columbus?
The answer is yes. The definition expands to include all the traditional minority groups recognized by the U.S. Equal Opportunity Commission. The disparity study could find disparity in any one of those minority groups. There may be a goal assigned to that disparity to try to eliminate it. Even if that disparity is not found with African-American business owners, our office will work hard to provide business opportunities for all minority groups that own businesses.
And perhaps I didn't phrase my question, but if the disparity is discovered in the African-American community, by expanding the definition in the proposed legislation to include other groups, does that in some way affect, if a disparity is found, what the city can do to set certain goals and programs to address that disparity as it relates to the African-American community?
No, absolutely not. As City Attorney Pfeiffer indicated, the disparity study will inform us who we need to take special initiatives through statutory revisions to make sure we eliminate the disparity. So whoever the study identifies having a disparity, that's where we will invest all our time, resources, and energy to eliminate that disparity. If it's African-Americans, that's where we're going to invest all of our blood, sweat, and tears.
And I'm not trying to put words in Mr. Alls. or into Attorney Moses's mouth, but I've had these conversations with Mr. Alls. in the community, it's just the general frustration of wanting, as it relates specifically to the African-American community, that if a disparity is found, being able to have concrete programs in place to address that disparity and ensuring that this legislation, by expanding the definition, does not somehow impact that possibility.
Yeah, and I gave this example to the NAACP when we met them. Say the disparity is 15%, and that 15% is for African-Americans. That 15% won't be watered down by any other minority group. We will focus on eliminating the disparity for whoever the group is identified to be. The other 85% will be among whoever is comprised of that other group of folks other than the disparity group. Does that help?
It does. Thank you, Chair.
President Protem.
Thank you, Chair Harden. And I do thank you, Council President, for asking those additional questions because my perspective of this is that, listening to the testimony, especially of Mr. Moses, it was really looking at, between now and whenever the results are back from this study, was that there may be that, since we already are looking at a number, they're saying 3% within the African-American community, that there's a possibility that even that 3% either would not be, could become less, or that it, that we would not still want to focus on African-Americans. I think you just shared through this conversation that we are going to continue, we know that we have to continue to do, we're going to continue to focus on African-American businesses. And I think Councilmember Harden's committee has committed, been committed to doing that. And that in the interim, that we're not going to take our eyes off of African-Americans as we also look at other individuals who, you know, defined by the U.S. Equal Opportunity Employment Commission, that there still may be business with others, but it's not going to take our eyes off the work for African-Americans in the interim. Because I think that's why, I mean, just, I'm not speaking for them, but it seems like there could be a belief that that could take, those other groups could take opportunities away from African-Americans. That's what I think it comes, what the thought process is. But just hearing your answer, the commitment is going to continue to move forward, and we look forward to the results of this study. And that really, I have to commend Councilmember Harden, the administration, for doing this study, because I certainly know that it had been asked for previously, and it's now being done, and I'm excited that we're going to get this information back. Thank you.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, Chair Harden. And this question is for City Attorney Pfeiffer. Could you speak briefly to the constitutionality of the definition as we currently have it, and if you believe that we would have a rational basis to continue to exclude any of the other minority groups?
There's a rational basis to identify minority groups. That's, council can do that. Then the question becomes, as you do a disparity study, are any of those minority groups historically discriminated against? You may find that some haven't been and some have. And then you have it to examine later, and this comes later, because this is really what it's about. It's about the money, contracts in the end. If you can prove that one particular minority group only has been discriminated against, and your predicate study shows that, then you can address that one minority group. But if in your study, as you identify other minority groups, that you can demonstrate with evidence that they have also been discriminated against, you can then structure remedies. I think the concern is, a subtext is that, well, if you include the other minority groups, and I think this goes to President Protem Tyson, are you now going to take away from the pie, the share of the pie we thought we were going to get? The answer is no. If you have 100% pie and you've got four minority groups, and you can show that they've been discriminated against, then what percentage will you allocate future contracts? But you first, and you can't, this council cannot get ahead of itself in its evidence. You have to wait and see what the disparity study shows before you start jumping ahead to fashioning the remedy that some people are already talking about. And I would encourage you to just be patient with that and wait, wait and see what your disparity study says.
Thank you, Councilmember Page and City Attorney. No questions, no further questions or comments? I move for passage. First, I request move from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Now I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee, I believe, in following my agenda, is the Technology Committee, and is chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight, in Technology, I bring forward ordinance 2951-2016 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management, on behalf of the Department of Technology, to establish a purchase order for maintenance service on production printing equipment with Gordon-Flesh Company Incorporated, utilizing a state-of-Ohio DAS cooperative contract to author, to also authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into contract with Gordon-Flesh Company for the purchase of a 12-month lease for production printing equipment, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City codes, to authorize the expenditure of $47,908.20 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Information Services Operating Fund, and declare an emergency. The Department of Technology requires this equipment to produce payroll, wages, and tax statements, auditors' warrants, jury summons, and income tax forms. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, in Technology Committee, is ordinance 2991-2016 to authorize the Directors of the Department of Public Safety and Technology to enter into contract with Gudinkoff Corporation for the installation of fiber optic cabling, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City codes, to authorize the expenditure of $101,242.62, or as much thereof as is necessary from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Capital Improvement Bond Fund, and declare an emergency. This ordinance will enable the city to install fiber optic cabling for the next-generation 911 call-taking enhancement at the city's 911 call center. A next-generation network requires our 911 service provider to manage the intake, routing, distribution, and delivery of calls placed to 911 from any device, most to highlight would be cell phones. In order to meet national emergency number association standards, we must provide a robust redundant fiber optic network. Passage of this ordinance permits us to do just that. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Question, one question?
Yes.
Can you say, what percentage of the city do we currently cover with regards to fiber optics? Do you know? What percentage of the city is covered currently with fiber optics?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, Chair Stenziano, members of council. I don't have a percentage of the amount of the city that's covered. We do have over 500 miles of fiber as it exists right now. We are continuing to build that out every day. So I don't have a percentage for you, but I can work on that based on square miles, if that would help.
I think as technology changes, obviously, more and more people are using cell phones, and the coverage that'll be valuable for public safety and others, at least to have some sense of what the general coverage would be. So if you could find out, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. Thank Councilmember Brown. We will make sure to follow up with that information. Any other questions or comments? I apologize for moving so quickly. Seeing none, I will move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. If I can move on to Public Utilities. Tonight, Public Utilities, we should start with ordinance 2511-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the Peterson Construction Company Incorporated for the combined sewer overflow reduction improvements at the wastewater treatment facility systems project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $1,842,000 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,842,000 from said loan fund for the division of sewage and drainage. The goal of this project is to restore the function of the regular gates and the Alum Creek storm tank to be able to regulate combined sewer overflow from the tank. Results of this project will reduce combined sewer overflows to Alum Creek. If there are no question or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance 2580-2016 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Clark Boat Company Incorporated for the purchase of work boat with trailer for the division of water, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the city code, and to authorize the expenditure of $80,000 from the Water Operating Fund. The workboat will be used by Watershed Management and the Hap Creamian Water Plant Staff for routine and emergency maintenance to dams and navigational buoys, safety cables, reservoir shoreline, boat ramps, and other tasks related to reservoir management. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance 2780-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the Kenmore Construction Company Incorporated for the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant Corrosion Prevention and Protective Coating Systems Project, Phase III, Contract J222, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,661,100 from said loan fund for the division of sewage and drainage, and to amend the 2016 capital improvements budget. This project will provide protective coatings on various structures, buildings, mechanical equipment, and process piping at the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant that are in need of rehabilitation. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance 2815 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter a contract with AEP TND Service LLC to provide for design, purchase, installation, and commissioning of the relay equipment at the Dublin Avenue substation in an amount not to exceed $675,000, and to waive competitive bidding provisions of the city code, to authorize the expenditure of $675,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund, and declare an emergency. The current lines from AEP Vine Street Substation to the Dublin Avenue Substation are obsolete and are now out of service. The contract will provide for the updating and improvement of the relay equipment. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, I have ordinance 2940-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Complete General Construction Company for the 2016 General Construction Project for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,381,203 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund. This project was initiated to respond to emergency needs in miscellaneous sanitary and storm sewer structural repairs and installations as directed by the Division of Sewage and Drainage. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
The last piece of legislation is ordinance 3031-2016 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Xylem Water Solutions USA, Inc., for the purchase of an ultraviolet disinfection system and design support for the Hap Creamian Water Plant for the Division of Water, and to authorize an expenditure up to $3,198,150 from the Water General Obligations Bond Fund. Xylem Water Solutions will furnish all necessary goods and services for a fully functioning UV disinfection system, including UV reactors, installation services, commissioning and training services. As we've mentioned before, UV rays will penetrate harmful pathogens in our water and destroy illness-causing microorganisms by attacking their genetic core. UV systems destroy 99.99% of harmful microorganisms without adding chemicals or changing your water's taste or odor. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have for 2016, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. The next committee is Rules and Reference. I chair that committee, and Councilmember Page has a whole piece of legislation in that committee. Councilmember?
Thank you, President Klein. The first piece I have is 2880-2016 to amend Columbus City Code Sections 21501 and 21509 to create the Division of Land Redevelopment within the Department of Development, to eliminate the Office of Land Redevelopment, and to authorize the city auditor to transfer the Empress Petty Cash and the Franklin County Esq. Fund. This legislation will impact what we all know to be the land bank, and I now would like to ask Director Shoney if he has any additional comments.
Thank you, Chair Page, members of council. This is really to allow us to provide some additional transparency. Up to this point, the Land Redevelopment Office has been reported as part of the Director's Office within the Department of Development. It's just not a very transparent way for us to do business, so we're just trying to allow the public and you all to see our operations a little better.
Thank you, Director. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
3019-2016. It says supplement the Columbus City Code by the amendment of Sections 70199, 330510, 330599, 450902, 450999, and 470199, which will clarify the current provisions of the Columbus City Code, and it will allow it to no longer prohibit or limit existing remedies available by law. I would like to thank the City Attorney's Office, as well as the Department of Development, for their collaboration on this code change. It came from communications from the MAC particularly, which is the Mid East Area Community Collaborative, and their desire to have our code more effectively address issues when you see repeat code violators coming back and forth to code enforcement. So I thank you both for your work. Director or City Attorney, if you have any additional comments. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And my final ordinance is 3026-2016, which will amend Section 330709 of the Columbus City Code, Title 33, which is in our zoning code, to establish appropriate standards for the granting of a variance by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And what this will do is align our code more closely with the standards enumerated by the Ohio Supreme Court and the Duncan Test. Director Messier, if you have any additional comments. Seeing none, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. And I have one final ordinance, and it is 2972-2016 to amend the heading of Section 46-2 of the Columbus City Charter by making a technical change to correct a heading error in accordance with Section 237 of the Charter. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the heading of Section 46-2 of the Columbus City Charter to correct an error in the title heading. This is a technical change that does not affect the intent or purpose of the section itself, which council has the authority to correct without a vote by the people. The current heading inaccurately refers to petitions for proposed charter amendments rather than petitions for recall, which is the subject of the section. In November 2014, Columbus voters overwhelmingly approved amendments to the Columbus City Charter, including the addition of new Section 237, which grants council the authority to make technical changes to the charter by unanimous vote. It's in the consultation. The City Attorney's Office has been determined that this change falls within the scope of council's authority. Can I get a motion to approve 2972-2016? Is there a second? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. Any other business to come before council in 2016? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned, and we have two non-agenda speakers that we will take momentarily.
Of 1635 Agendacy Avenue, that house still sits like that today, not being worked on. There can be some complications by having some people to come in to renovate these homes if I give up the $35,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? Have a great rest of the 2016 year.